Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. I would like to call this meeting of the San Jose City Council to order for the afternoon of September 17th. Tony, would you please call the roll?
Jimenez.
Present.
Torres.
Present.
Cohen. Ortiz.
Present.
Davis.
Here.
Dwan.
Present.
Candelas.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Batra.
Present.
Kamay.
Here.
Mayhan.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Now if you are able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, let's do this. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today's invocation will be delivered by our very own San Jose Police Department Chaplain Brian Allen, who is such a great support and inspiration to all of our officers and their families and the broader San Jose community, and I'm thrilled to hand things over to Councilmember Candelas to tell us a bit more.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, and happy Council Day, everybody. I'm happy to welcome San Jose Police Chaplain Brian Allen to our chambers. He serves as our police chaplain, which also assists and supports our community during times of crisis or when conducting critical incident management services. They assist any member, family member, or retired member of the San Jose Police Department, as well as extending their services to any member of our community. I wanted to have this invocation today as a mindful reminder of what our first responders must face on a daily basis in light of the recent events in our community. I think it's important that we advocate for the use of mental health resources and call attention to this crisis that we have in our community, and we must also remember our officers, past and living, who commit to a life of selfless service and sacrifice and ensure that they are never forgotten. Thank you, Chaplain, and please lead our invocation today.
Thank you. If you'll pray with me. God, we thank you for this opportunity to come here today. We pray for all the conversations that are going to happen here. There's a lot that happens behind the scenes, and we also appreciate the time where we have to come together and be able to brainstorm, to think things through, to make decisions. God, I pray that you would allow this meeting to be full of unity, full of clarity. God, that you would give each man and woman here direction and guidance as they make decisions that affect our city. God, we thank you for a city that has a desire to want to work together with not only those in politics but those in law enforcement, as well as businesses and community members, and we thank you for the people that stand before me here up in the chairs that are here because they're concerned about some issue in their community and they want to be able to have a voice. So, God, we pray that they would also be encouraged and realize that there is a city that does care about them, a city that wants to help them and be there for them. God, we pray for our city that you would continue to unify us, that you would help us to have peace, that you would help us to have safety. As being, working with the police department, God, I see and hear many of the bad things that happen in our city, the evil that happens in our city, but I also get to rub shoulders with officers that every day go out and keep our city safe, people that care about making a difference in the community, whether it's helping with the homeless or helping with crime or just helping with the elderly that need encouragement or help. God, I pray that you would continue to help our city as we seek hard to have integrity, work hard to be able to show kindness and love to one another. God, we pray that this city would be a city that continues to be looked at from around the world as a city that is, that cares, a city that wants to make a difference, and a city that wants to help. And so, God, we pray that today during this meeting that you would allow a lot of really good conversation, that you would allow good ideas, and that you would ultimately bring us unity as we try to figure out how to make some of these decisions. And I thank you for each men and women that are behind me and those around at City Hall across the way, God, that work hard every day to make our city a better place, and we pray all these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain. We appreciate the work you do every day and you taking the time to be here to help us start our meeting. We're on to ceremonial items. Councilmember Candelas, if you'll join me at the podium, we will recognize Michael Gabler.
All right. Good afternoon. Today, we are recognizing an amazing community leader from District Eight, Michael Gabler. Michael established the Norwood Neighborhood Association in 2016 and currently serves as president. Fun fact, I've actually known Michael since he started six years ago, but at the time, I was a staff member working for then State Senator Jim Bell. And when I first took office last year, he was one of the first community leaders that I met with, and during his leadership as president, Michael has organized many successful National Night Out block parties, typically with over 200 attendees, also led beautification projects, including cleanups, mural paintings, and dumpster days. Over the last two years, I have personally joined him at many of these events, and I've seen the dedication, enthusiasm, and passion Michael has for serving his community. And when we call for volunteers, he is consistently one of the first folks who we hear from and is ready to lend his support whenever he can, from supporting the Boy Scouts to being our guest Santa, or knowing who the guest Santa is, for our Holiday in the Square event. He does this because he truly believes in our community, and his most recent efforts were instrumental in the installation of Norwood Neighborhood banners that are lining the streets, which instill a sense of pride for our residents and fosters a sense of belonging and ultimately creates stronger neighborhoods. Please join me in recognizing Michael Gabler for his many years of service, helping make District Eight and more broadly, San Jose, a better place to live.
Thank you to Domingo, Matt, City Council. This is a great honor, and I appreciate it. I live my life by a set of mantras. The first one is everything's a trade-off, and being in civic leadership, it's all about trade-offs, so I encourage you to continue to make the right trade-offs. Domingo let the cat out of the bag. I do have another volunteer activity that I do, and it was supposed to be super secret and only Domingo knew it, but now everybody does. I was able to, a couple of years ago, very surreptitiously in that secret identity, get Matt to take a picture with me.
Oh, look at that!
It's a picture of Santa with Matt May.
Little did he know, so thank you very much.
Mayor, would you present a commendation to Michael?
On behalf of the whole council, thank you for working in the community. We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. That was great. Now, we're going to invite Councilmember Dwan to join me at the podium, and we will recognize and proclaim Mexican Independence Day. I know we had a number of colleagues involved in the celebration recently. Maybe we can have everybody who would like to come down and join us here. Quite a crowd this weekend for the Grito. Councilmember?
Thank you.
Incredible. Thank you so much. First of all, I want to thank you, my Latino colleagues. Allow me this opportunity to do a palkamation for the Hispanic community, and it's a great pride. And for them allowing me to do this, just as much I allow them to do the Vietnamese palkamation as well. We gather to celebrate a momentous occasion that holds deep significance for millions of people, Mexican Independence Day. On September 16, we commemorate the birth of a nation that showed incredible resilience and strength throughout its history. This day marked the start of a Mexico journey toward freedom and sovereignty, a journey that began in 1810 with a single powerful cry for independence, El Grito de Dolores. This declaration ignited a revolutionary spirit that would ultimately shape the destiny of the entire nation. For our Mexican-American community, this day is more than a historical marker. It is a living testament to their enduring spirit, hard work, and perseverance. Mexican-Americans have contributed immensely to the rich tapestry of our nation, bringing them not only to their vibrant culture and traditions, but also an unwavering commitment to their communities. They have built bridges where there were divided, and their story of resilience and achievement enriches our collective experience as a society. I would also like to extend my heartfelt gratitude to my colleague on this council for their dedication and effort in hosting El Grito at the City Hall. Your commitment to celebrating and recognizing our diversity cultural heritage helped to foster understanding, respect, and unity within our community. By coming together to commemorate this important day, we affirm or share value our commitment to embracing and celebrating our rich and multicultural identity. In closing, let us continue to support and uplift each other, draw inspiration from history and achievement we celebrate today. May we honor the legacy of those who have fought for freedom by striving for future filled with opportunity and equality for all. Councilmember, I believe at this point, Councilmember Torres would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Councilmember Dwan. So, I would like to say Happy Mexican Independence Day to our large Mexican community here in San Jose. Happy Mexican Independence Day, everyone. So, on Sunday, here at your San Jose City Hall, we hosted El Grito and the Mexican flag raising to honor the contributions of our Mexican community. I want to thank the Fiesta Patrias Committee, which was, by the way, started by my former boss, Councilmember Carrasco, and so now Jesus Flores and the Mexican Council has taken it over, and the councilmembers that you see here in the back, the Latino councilmembers, are part of that committee and sponsor that event and host that event for our large Mexican community. We had over 8,000 folks here on Sunday to celebrate our Mexican community, and so again, we have, our Mexican community continues to have deep roots in our city of San Jose. We have so many contributions to be proud of and traditions as well, and so that's why it is important for us to continue to celebrate our Mexican community. It's large, it's beautiful, it's diverse, and so again, Happy Mexican Independence Day.
Thank you, and I ask the mayor to present the palkamation.
Thank you very much. Accepting this on behalf of the Lhasa Roundtable and on behalf of the community, we have, we're so happy to have so much representation on the City Council now, and we noticed a lot of our activities are coming back, so that's wonderful. And as you know, many of our indigenous community has roots in Mexico, so the holiday is celebrated here as well. So, on behalf of the Lhasa Roundtable, I accept this. Thank you.
All right, we are on to orders of the day. Does anyone on the council have any changes to the printed agenda? Okay, not seeing any. We will be adjourning today's meeting in memory of Dr. George Castro, who passed away on July 30, 2024. He's Associate Dean in the College at San Jose State University, where he was an advocate and champion for equal opportunity in education, and also served on President Clinton's Commission on Educational Excellence for Hispanics. Councilmember Ortiz, please tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Castro was an accomplished chemist who came to San Jose to work at the IBM Research Division, where he authored dozens of pivotal research papers and holds several patents to his name. At the same time, Dr. Castro developed a passion for expanding opportunities in the sciences for Latinos and other communities of color in San Jose. He was pivotal in the founding of this society for the advancement of Chicanos and Native Americans in science, and served as its president in the 1970s. After retiring from IBM, Dr. Castro became an Associate Dean in the College of Science at San Jose State University, where he built strong partnerships with San Jose's Public School Districts and community colleges to help bring more federal funding to East San Jose students. Dr. Castro helped secure millions in funding from the National Science Foundation to expand science education for the Eastside Union High School District, helped designate San Jose City College and Evergreen Valley College as Hispanic-serving institutions, opening them up to new permanent federal funding streams, and helped to open science labs for Joseph George Middle School and San Jose High School. Dr. Castro's leadership also proved instrumental in naming Ernesto Galarsa's Elementary School and Castaletto Middle School, bringing much-needed light to the long history of Latino scientists in San Jose. Despite his personal humility, Dr. Castro's leadership was present throughout the city. He served on the Board of the Tech Museum, the Doctor Ernesto Galarsa Institute, and President Clinton's Commission on Educational Excellence in Education for Hispanic Americans. Dr. Castro was also the recipient of the 1999 Presidential Award for Excellence in Science, Mathematics, and Engineering Mentoring. He is remembered by his family, including his wife Beatrice, four children, and five grandchildren, and generations of Latino education leaders who found in Dr. Castro an enthusiastic collaborator. To speak more about this titan of educational leadership, I'd like to invite Dr. Castro's son, Gerald, to please say a few words.
Thank you, Councilman Ortiz, for those kind words. I don't really think I can add much more to that. That was wonderful, but I just want to say thank you so much to the council for honoring my dad. Ever since, he brought our little family here in 1968 from Los Angeles, he's been involved, he was involved with the community in San Jose. And even right up till the end, when his health was failing, he would be running science workshops at Joseph George Middle School, introducing students to physical principles for the first time in their lives. He was a PhD in chemistry, so he loved teaching science to kids. That was really his passion. But thank you so much for honoring him. We, our family really appreciates it, and thank you so much.
I just want to share that looking at you is like looking at a mirror of your father. You look exactly like him. It's beautiful to see.
And I'll just add on a personal level, Dr. Castro and I overlapped at Joseph George when I was teaching in seventh and eighth grade, and the impact he had on some of my students, he ran an after-school program, a lab, and usually had about 20 students at a time, and that was their safe space. That was where they could just follow their curiosity. I remember the experiments and the projects that came out of his after-school lab, and I mean, it was transformative for just, you know, class after class of students. I mean, it was transformative for just, you know, class after class of, of student who found themselves, found their curiosity. It was a beautiful thing to witness at Joseph George in my two years being a teacher there. And so his impact on our community has rippled out across thousands of families. So we're very sorry for your loss. It's, it's a loss for our whole community. Thank you for being here. Thank you, councilmember. Okay, we did not have any changes to the agenda, so we will move on to the closed session report.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have something to report out of closed session this morning. In the, we have a settlement in the case of City of San Jose and others versus Three M Manufacturing, E.I. De Pont, and a number of other defendants. It's involving PFAS litigation. It is national litigation based in the district court in South Carolina. We are joining a settlement involving two of the defendants, Tyco and, oh God, two of the defendants, I'll leave it at that. And we do not have the agreement yet, but at some point we will, and that will be made public. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora. Appreciate your report out of closed session. Next is the consent calendar. Are there any items the council would like to pull from consent?
Yeah, I'd like to pull two point nine.
Okay, Councilor Menendez will pull two point nine. Any others? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to pull two point nine just simply to ask a question. It's related to procurement of some auto body work. So it's the actions related to the purchase orders with Laguna Auto Body, Inc., and B2 Perfection Auto Body for Vehicle and Truck Collision Repairs. They went through an RFP, and this is, which office? Finance Department did this. Is there anyone from the Finance Department here? Oh, I want to see you. And I'll ask the questions as you're coming down. So effectively what we're doing here, and this for me, and I, and I wanted to ask this just with my colleagues here, because other folks are going to need to carry the water on these type of ideas, but just to elevate something, is that we're effectively saying that combined total compensation, three hundred and fifty thousand, to a maximum nine hundred thousand for auto body sort of repairs to some city vehicles, Public Works Department Fleet, and on and on. And so what I'm curious about is, and what raised this, what sort of piqued my interest here, is that this is going to a company effectively in Sunnyvale. And so what I was wondering was during, through, through the procurement process and the RFP, which obviously is objective, you, you sort of see who sort of rises to the top and approach it that way. Is there any point allocation in the RFP process that we give to companies for being, for residing in San Jose? And the reason I ask that is, what comes to mind for me is just an interest that I think we all should have of trying to keep the tax dollars here in the city, and I'm wondering if, if there's anything in the RFP process of the procurement policies? I know there's a policy that's mentioned. I haven't had a chance to go look at it, but if there's anything in there that can help us to, dare I say, avoid this and make sure that we keep the business here in the city of San Jose?
Thank you, Councilmember Jimenez, L.B. Udom, Deputy Director of Finance. Yes, the city has an LBE program for local and small businesses, which gives them preference on these kinds of procurement, where they actually get a certain, a certain amount of points allocated to them.
Right, so, so, so they can, so I think maybe this was a small business, but I guess maybe the definition of local is what comes, what pops into my head as we, as we discuss this. Is there anything that's very explicit about, are you located in San Jose or not? And can we do that? I'm not even sure if it's legal, but are we able to, to insert, question or put that within the RFP?
Yes, councilmember, it's actually Santa Clarica only limited.
Okay, all right. Would there be any, any challenges if we as a council decided to open up this policy and look at it and say, to, or give direction to you all as you move through some of these in the future, to say if you reside within the borders of San Jose, that you're going to get an extra two points or three, or whatever it may be? Are we able to do that?
Councilmember, we can look into that. The, our requirement now is actually informed by the MUNI code, so it may actually involve a change of the MUNI code, but it's something we can definitely look at.
Okay, and then we have the ability to change the MUNI code via the normal course of business here, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to lift that up, because I think it's important that we try to keep all the tax dollars here in the city of San Jose. But thank you so much for the process. I'll move approval of this. Obviously, it's necessary. I think it's, it's a good thing generally, but I think it's, some of these questions are worth asking.
Absolutely. Are you willing, thank you, and there may be one more question for you? I heard a second. Are you willing to move the consent as a whole?
I'll move the consent as a whole.
Consent calendar, sorry. Thank you. Okay, and Councilmember Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if maybe Lee remembers or somebody on staff remembers, but I know we were going to review the local business preference policy at the city council level. I remember bringing that up before in, in one of the committees. Is that, is that coming through the pipeline? Are we aware of that?
If it was part of the idea, let me have a week and go back and look at the council referrals. I don't remember that off the top of my head or it being directed by the full council or rules, but it's something that we can follow up with.
Yeah, no, because I've brought it up. I've tried to introduce a memo specifically for like local preference and then minority-owned businesses, but then I was told by staff that it, it was already in the chamber of going through the, the city process, so it'd be great to, to see a, a follow-up on that. Because I agree with Councilmember Setio Jimenez that we should be doing, keeping money in our city. We should be identifying small and local-owned minority-owned businesses to do our work. So, thank you.
Agreed, thank you. Okay, Tony, do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
We do not.
Okay, let's come back to the council. Not seen any hands, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. We're on to item three point one, Report of the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. I wanted to use this opportunity to introduce you to our new acting finance director. I'm pleased to inform you that I selected Drew Corbett as our acting finance director after Rick Bruno's resignation. Drew will, Drew will serve in this role until the permanent position is filled by the end of the year. As the city's acting finance director, Drew will be responsible for managing, protecting, and reporting on the city's financial resources to enhance its financial condition for residents, businesses, and investors. The Finance Department also works with city departments in the strategic support city service area to effectively develop, manage, and safeguard the city's fiscal, physical, technological, and human resources to enable and enhance the delivery of city services and projects. Drew has nearly twenty years of municipal finance experience in local government, having worked in the cities of Sunnyvale, Menlo Park, and San Mateo in both budget and finance positions. In his most recent city, San Mateo, Drew became their finance director in two thousand and fifteen. In two thousand and sixteen, he retained his title of finance director while also adding the title of Assistant City Manager. In late two thousand and eighteen, the San Mateo City Council appointed Drew as the city manager, and then he retired in June, two thousand and twenty-three. Drew is now a local government consultant at DKG Consultants and provides budgeting and financial planning, organizational and operational assessments, and project management services. I am very confident that Drew will serve us well in this role, and we can't thank him enough for his willingness to help us. He will also be supported by Kim Hock, who's the Deputy Director of Finance for the airport, who has graciously agreed to assist the Finance Department in the temporary role of Assistant Director. That's one team right in action right there. Drew, would you please come up? Thank you. Let's give him a round of applause.
Good afternoon, Mayor Mahan, members of the city council, Acting Finance Director Drew Corbett. Thank you, Jennifer, for the warm welcome. It's an absolute pleasure to be here. I am a longtime resident of San Jose, so it's wonderful for me to have an opportunity to work for the city in which I live. I've been here for a couple of weeks now and have been incredibly impressed by this organization, and especially the staff in the Finance Department, who are just first rate. I look forward to working with everyone and serving the community over my time here with the city, so thank you again.
Thank you, Drew.
Well, that is great news indeed. Thank you for moving quickly, Jennifer, and Drew, thank you for answering the call. Thrilled to have you in this role. We are on to item three point three, Adoption of Statement of Policy and City Council Questions for the Perspective Director of Environmental Services. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay, coming back to the council, colleagues, questions, comments, or a motion? Move approval. Okay. All right, Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, great. We're on to item three point four, which is a proposed resolution on federal recognition for Moecmaaloni tribe. There is a staff presentation, then we will go to public comment, and then we'll come back to the council for deliberation. And Zolma, feel free to just jump in whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, city council members of the public. My name is Suelma Masiel. I'm the Director of the Office of Racial and Social Equity. I am here to introduce item three point four. It's an informational item on the resolution on federal recognition for Moecmaaloni tribe. Just as a reminder, during the August seventh Rules Committee meeting, the committee requested that the city staff return to a San Jose City Council meeting to address the following questions. One, background on the federal recognition process. Two, the impact the council resolution would have on other tribes in the area. And three, if the resolution were to pass, what would happen next? The item was later deferred, was deferred at the August twenty-seventh council meeting, and subsequently, the item was revised at the September fourth Rules Committee meeting. And at that meeting, the committee approved to make today's three point four item an information-only item, meaning no action will be taken by the city council today. So joining me is Dr. Kerry J. Malloy, Assistant Professor of Native American and Indigenous Studies at San Jose State University, specializing in indigenous and genocide studies. He's an enrolled member of the Yurok tribe and has over fifteen years of experience working with federally-recognized tribes and tribal organizations. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Dr. Kerry Malloy, who will address the questions that were asked at the August fourth Rules Committee meeting.
Good afternoon and thank you. I was asked to provide an overview of federal recognition, and so we're going to start way back, and we're going to come forward. Since colonizing first contact, there's always been some form of European nations recognizing the indigenous nations of this continent. That plays out in two very separate ways, and it gets complex when we get to California. So we're going to start on the East Coast, which we're all familiar with, and then we'll come here, because this is a little different. European nations recognized that the nations that had always occupied and lived and managed and stewed the land of what we now call North America were sovereign nations. They entered into treaties with them. The Dutch and the Haudenosaunee entered into a treaty. Britain entered into treaties. As we know, treaties are international law. That had been the practice that the United States inherited after the revolution in seventeen seventy-six. Prior to seventeen seventy-six, George III issued the Royal Proclamation of seventeen sixty-three, which solidified in British law that the management of the relationship between Britain and tribes would be held at the central government level. After the revolution and the founding of the United States and the Constitution, and supported by the decisions of what we call the Marshall Trilogy, Johnson v. McIntosh, Cherokee Nation v. Georgia, Worcester v. Georgia, federal, the federal government has and remains the primary and only governmental agency that is responsible for federal tribal relations. It creates a federal trust responsibility, which I'll talk about in a minute. Spain did not operate on that same principle. Spain and Mexico did not enter into treaties with tribes. They laid out a, a series of requirements for indigenous people called the requirements that said, you know, you have a choice. You convert to Catholicism, you recognize the authority of the king, you recognize our authority, or we have the right to declare just war on you. That didn't mean they stopped recognizing that indigenous nations were there and operational. It just meant they operated differently. When the United States assumed control of California with the Treaty of Guadalupe Hidalgo, it imported the same process that it had been using to deal with tribes. Up until nineteen seventy-eight, that process was sort of convoluted. It could be by treaty, it could be by a legislative agreement, it could be by legislation that authorized the president to issue an executive order to recognize a tribal group or recognize a reservation or establish a reservation. That process has remained in flux for a while, so a lot of it was done at the administrative level. In California, because of the way in which colonization occurred here and the way in which the United States assumed control of this territory, a whole new system was developed, a new reservation system, as we call it. It's resulted in an, an equal and complex system by which reservations were established, tribes were quote-unquote "recognized" by the government, dealt with as tribes, and then one day administratively not. Sometimes there are records that tell us why that stopped, sometimes there are not records that tell us why that stopped. To end that, the Bureau of Indian Affairs, which is the primary government agency responsible for dealing with native tribes, established the federal acknowledgement process, which are a series of seven criteria that a tribe or a petitioner tribe must meet to be granted federal recognition and establish the federal trust responsibility between the tribe and the federal government. That process has been updated, but it places an unfair burden on tribes, on those petitioning for federal recognition, because it requires that the petitioner demonstrate that it has operated as a sovereign nation, as a governmental agency, since nineteen hundred. Now, remember, these rules were promulgated in nineteen seventy-eight. The rules ask that petitioning tribes demonstrate something that they never knew they were going to have to demonstrate. They have to show that they were also continuously recognized throughout that entire period by other agencies, by the government, by the communities they exist in, as a governmental agency, as a sovereign nation, as a community. Once again, that goes back, backwards. If you don't know you're going to have to prove something, you're not maintaining, you, you have no reason to do, to live up to or keep records up to a standard you don't know you have to keep. That process takes a while. Tribes have been known to sit in the federal recognition process for thirty-plus years. That is a federal government issue that they have been trying to address. So the federal acknowledgement process is the primary way. The second way is through judicial action, of being able to demonstrate that, yes, you have had maintained as a group, you've maintained some form of relationship with the federal government through the entire day of your existence, and that the government does actually recognize you, they just have not put you on the federal acknowledgement list. Tribes have sued and received that recognition. The third way is congressional action, in which Congress exerts its plenary power over tribes and says, we as Congress recognize that this tribe is a sovereign nation and the federal trust responsibility exists between us. The federal trust responsibility is the legal and moral obligation that the United States has to tribes. It's responsibility to them. It has been tested in court and tested in Congress, and it exists, but it creates, the federal acknowledgement creates a secondary component that often gets left out. In recognizing the federal trust responsibility and the sovereignty of the tribe, it creates a dual citizenship status for the citizens of that tribe. They become recognized citizens of a separate sovereign nation. So as you are citizens of the United States, citizens of the state of California, citizens of the city of San Jose, and citizens of the county of Santa Clara, this type of recognition would add an additional citizenship, a political status that is not racial or ethnic. For a tribe to be recognized, then they would become citizens of their tribe. So there's a lot that goes into this. It's not just about recognizing a tribe and the sovereign status of a tribe, it's also recognizing the inherent political status of the individual. Now, that's the three basic ways. There are other ways for federal recognition to occur. One is an administrative appeal of the initial list of federally-recognized entities. That is less common, but mostly, once the federal process of federal acknowledgement has been exhausted, it falls to Congress to act. So I, that's the high overview, so I can try to answer questions and see where we can go with this.
Great. Does that conclude the staff presentation?
Yes, Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation.
Great, thank you. Okay, we're going to turn to public comment. Each person who submitted a comment card, which you can still do at either of the boxes here down at the base of the auditorium seating, each person will have two minutes to speak, and then we'll come to the council. Council members, of course, can call on folks if they have questions for members of the audience. Tony, go ahead. And/or our speakers in the box, of course. Sorry, Tony. Go ahead.
Abigail Arieno, Karina Arieno, Ezekiel Dominguez, Jennifer Torres, and Yana Lopez. Please come on down, you'll get two minutes to speak. First person to the microphone, just go, you don't have to speak in the order I called you. Repeat the names again?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I was having a hard time with the handwriting. It's been a week or so. Aleil Arieno, A.A.L.I.Y.A.L. is the first name. Karina Arieno, Ezekiel Dominguez, Yana Lopez, and Jennifer Torres.
San Jose City Council members, Horsha Tuhie, Kanak Raka, and Karina Aralano, I'm a tribal member of the Moecmaoloni. I'm a mother of two indigenous boys. I am a San Jose native born and raised. I'm a part of the Aralano lineage, and I can trace my genealogy as far back as 1764 to these very lands. Since 1906, my family, my ancestors included, have been waiting for our rights to be restored. Well, we are tired of waiting because it's very clear that there is very little interest in doing what is right for the Moecmaoloni people. While I understand that you cannot reinstate our federal recognition, I strongly believe that it is your responsibility to support my people in our efforts. My people were once federally-recognized tribe under the Verona ban, and that was taken away from us, just like our land, just like our culture, and our language. Despite the attempt to decimate my people, I am proud to say that my children and I actively contribute to the revitalization of our traditional and sacred dance. We are ghost dancers. My tribe, my family, I should say, hold ceremonies together, we pray together, and more importantly, we support one another. Our existence should have never been questioned or challenged. I stand before you today, and that is only because of the resilience and strength of my ancestors. It is my duty as a living descendant to fight for what is right. I need my relatives put back into the earth where they should have never been disturbed. My people do not deserve to be sitting in boxes, anywhere. I will not stop fighting for what is right, and I would hope that the city of San Jose would support the first people of this land, the land you currently utilize, live, and thrive on. I cannot explain how disappointed I am in how the city council has handled this matter. I need justice for my people, and you will see me over and over again until we do, until we get there, until we do what is right. We are the seeds of this land, we are Moecma. We are not going anywhere.
Thank you, next speaker.
All right. Just as, and I should have mentioned this at the beginning, I apologize, so that we can keep moving and hear from everyone, and everyone's constitutional right here to have their voice heard is protected, we're going to ask people, as we always do, to refrain from cheering or booing or otherwise disrupting the meeting, because Tony needs to be able to call the next person up. Thank you for abiding by the rules we have. Thank you. Go ahead, Tony.
Horsha Tuhie, Kanak Raka, Ezekiel Dominguez, Kanahini Dolores Sanchez. I greet you in my native Tchechiano language. I am a Moecmaoloni youth member. I believe my tribe deserves federal recognition, not just because I think we need it, but because I think it's fair. It surprises me how through all these years, me and my people still do not have federal recognition. It would mean a lot to me and my people if we did gain federal recognition, because that would mean all our hard work has paid off. I don't think it's fair that other tribes but Moecma have gained federal recognition, our people did not fight to be unknown, they fought to be recognized. My people will not stop fighting until our tribe, the Moecmaoloni, gain federal recognition. Most of my family are out attending the Trail of Truth and are also out fighting for federal recognition. Federal recognition is not just something we want, but something my tribe needs. If we do not gain federal recognition, our future generations will be standing where I am. Although I am young and still a child, I do not wish to see my offspring continue to fight for federal recognition, just as my Nana Geraldine Lopez, who is no longer with us, has stood in this very place to also advocate the previous mayors and councils. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, next speaker. I'd also like to call down Louise Bylick. It looks like Jalisa Torres. I meant Alfonso Salazar.
Hi, my name is Yana, and I'd like to show you a video.
With the city and the county has taught us all a lot, not the least of which has been to be more sensitive in how we treat those people who came before us. She has worked closely with the agency and the city on saying that peoples whose remains had to be relocated were done so in a very sensitive, proper way, and she has become a friend of mine, a woman that I have admired for a long, long time. And I believe we're real lucky, Rosemary, that you're a member of our community, and we are a member of your community. You came a long time before we did, 10,000 years ago. So it's my honor and privilege to get to introduce to all of you Rosemary Canberra, and thank her for her efforts.
This is a video from 30 years ago, in 1994, of San Jose Mayor Susan Hammer introducing Rosemary Canberra, the Moecmaoloni former tribal chairman, tribal chairwoman.
Thank you, next speaker.
Horsha Tuhie, City Council members, Kanak Raka, Aleia Aralano. I'm a Moecmaoloni tribal member, I'm 17 years old, and I'm a senior at Oak Grove High School. I'm a California dancer, I know my language, and I know who I am. I hold ceremonies with my family, Mak Suyakma. I was born and raised here, in San Jose, the city I call home. I want to express my concern for how my people are treated here in my homeland. I have taken many history classes, and do you want to know how humiliating it is that I am forced to learn about Christopher Columbus and his so-called "Discovery of America"? Moecmaoloni is treated as if we're, we've been exterminated, as if we are no longer here. While I stand before you, living and breathing, I am living proof of the resilience of my people. Mak Moecma. We will not go away, and I would like for all of you to consider how damaging and frustrating it is for the way you are treating us. If you all refuse to support us, the first people of the land in which you sit, then that says a lot about how you feel about the community that has already been robbed of our language, our culture, and our spiritual practices. I receive, we receive so much support from other nations and communities but the city of San Jose. If all of you guys decide to vote us down, I am embarrassed. If you all dis, ooh, ooh. My family deserves justice. My grandfather Gregory Aralano passed away June 3rd this year, and throughout his 67 years of life, he did not get to see justice for his people. I will continue my grandfather's legacy and honor him. We are the ghost dancers. My family is here to stay whether you would like to support us or not.
Thank you, next speaker.
Horsha Tuhie, Kanak Raka, Jalisa Torres, Kanahini Dolores Sanchez. I'm on behalf of my grandmas, Geraldine Lopez, Dolores Sanchez, and Julia Lopez, also for my families who are no longer with us. I greet you in my native Tchechiano language. I'm a Moecmaoloni youth member. I grew up here on East Side San Jose and go to school at Overfell High School. You guys have given the Moecmaoloni another roadblock, and now are requesting a presentation that none of our tribal members or council members were asked to be a part of. Do you guys know that my people died right here where we are standing? My ancestors are right across the street, at San Jose State, in boxes till today. I feel very hurt that the very people that were voted in positions of power are not using the power to recognize my people. People and ancestors, imagine having your home taken away from colonizers and having your kids being sent to boarding schools, and having your hair being chopped off and being forced to forget your language. Even though this has happened to us, we are still surviving here in San Jose, where we live in poverty. Last but not least, I would like to say prayers to my family, who I haven't seen in months because they are doing the Trail of Truth, where we are going up to Washington DC to fight for our federal recognition. My family has given a lot to fight for this war going on. Take time to make change for our future generations. Oh.
Thank you, next speaker. I'd also like to call down Sitlamina, Melissa Marquette, and Nicholas.
Hello, Mayor, Matt Man, and council members. I encourage you to watch the YouTube video entitled "Moecmaoloni Tribe: Back From Extinction." The video was made 30 years ago. In the video, there was an intertribal recognition ceremony honoring the tribe which took place here in San Jose. Mayor Susan Hammer had the honor of introducing Charlie Nishbe's mother, Rosemary Canberra, who was the tribe's chairperson at the time. In her introduction, Mayor Hammer stated, "We are real lucky that you are a member of our community, and we are a member of your community. Your tribe came a long time before we did, 10,000 years ago. I'm the artist that painted the mural along the Guadalupe River honoring the tribe. I listen to this video every morning before I went out to paint the mural, because it was my daily reminder why it was important that we honor them. Please support the Moecmaoloni tribe. Thank you."
Thank you, next speaker.
Yeah, my name is Sitlamina from the Centro Otslan Chico Mostoc, and we study our culture. We're trying to learn about our culture because we have been fighting for who we are for the last 500 years, and, and so we understand the struggle that, that the Moecmaoloni people are going through. We have to recognize, and you all must recognize, that this is the land of the Moecmaoloni people. And, you know, they have gone, we know this history. It happened to us for a very long time. It's very hypocritical to, to celebrate the 16th of September, because that was only 300 years that we were enslaved. We continue to struggle for our liberation as indigenous people, and so we have to learn who we are, and that's, that's precisely what we're doing at the Centro Otslan. So you have to recognize the stance that the native Moecmaoloni people are taking. This is their land, they're buried here, they've been walking these lands, and it's only, it's only correct for you to take that position. You cannot be hypocritical about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, next speaker. I'd also like to call down Jorge Pacheco Jr., Yisong Kim, and Ellie Camp.
Hello, okay. My name is Melissa Marquette. I'm a PhD student in planetary science at UC Berkeley. I am definitely not here as a member of the Moecmaoloni tribe. I am not, my ancestors are not from this continent, but I was born and raised on Moecmaoloni ancestral homeland. In the Bay Area, we like to pride ourselves on taking a stand and doing the right thing. We know that there were people living and thriving here prior to statehood for California, prior to arrival of Europeans on this continent. We know, we know that they were here, and we know that they are here today. They're our friends and neighbors, they're members of our community. The least we can do as we live on their ancestral lands is to recognize that they're here. I urge you to do the right thing, take a stand like we love to do in the Bay Area, and support federal recognition for the Moecmaoloni tribe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hello, thank you, council members of the city of San Jose. My name is Nicholas, a third-generation San Josean, and I was blessed growing up hearing the stories from my grandmother of her time picking on the orchards and in Del Monte fruit cannery. It has sparked my passion for our city's history, and I have my own hard copies of Clyde Arbuckle's History of San Jose and of Dr. C. Winter's first anthropological research of the excavation done on Almeda. I called out of work today, where I like to joke that I'm an executive tour guide, but I share stories to potential business owners who wanted to bring their spark out here to San Jose, to children, to schools, and it's a sad footnote that I end off that our city does not recognize our local indigenous tribe. I only ask that, for the sake of my grandmother who lived to see more than 100 years living in San Jose, that we do right. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
My name is Dr. Yisong Kim. I am a Korean-American residing and working as a clinical psychologist in the homeland of the Moecmaoloni tribe. I believe that for all of us who reside on this land, it is important to acknowledge the indigenous community that has lived on and cared for the land for time immemorial. Erasing and ignoring the violent history of this land continues to act as chronic trauma for indigenous communities and harms all of us. I believe granting the Moecmaoloni tribe's request for federal recognition is the bare minimum, but an important step towards justice for the Moecma tribe. I call for the city council and all of us living on this land to support the Moecma's request for federal recognition as an important step towards becoming right with and honoring one another and this land. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
My name is Ellie Camp, and I want to express my support for the resolution for federal recognition of the Moecmaoloni, whose land we are on. I was raised in San Jose as the child of Taiwanese immigrants and have lived in the South Bay for more than 40 years. It is a grave injustice that the federal recognition of the Moecma continues to be denied, and disgusting that this recognition continues to be delayed due to questionable political and financial interests. You today have the opportunity to be a part of righting this wrong. It is the bare minimum we can do to honor the first inhabitants of this land. The Moecma deserve justice.
Thank you. I'd also like to call down Octavio Solaria. I'd also like to call down Octavio Solaria, Dez, Marjorie Siegel, and Alicia Sandoval.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jorge Pacheco Jr., UCL Kinichkin, Basik Aba Jorge Pacheco Jr. I'm here representing not only my own community of indigenous peoples who are huge populists in the Bay Area, Maya people, but I'm also here to support the Moekma Aloni Nation, the Moekma Aloni Peoples who are telling you that they still exist, who are telling you that they deserve recognition and who deserve recognition. I'm an elected school board member at the Oak Grove School District and I'm the only male indigenous elected official in the entire county out of four. The reason why this misrepresentation happens is because the history that has led us to this point where there's not a single indigenous tribe in the Bay Area that has federal recognition, that has access to important federal resources, or that even has their histories being taught systematically throughout our classrooms, that's a problem. That's why I dedicated my entire life to fixing that as a Native Studies teacher and to this day when I teach about federal recognition to my own kids, while the complicated congressional and legal and judicial narrative is there, the moral one isn't. The moral obligation that we have as elected officials to the people whose land we're still on is crystal clear, it's simple. And that is if they're telling you that they want recognition and they need your help with that, help them. You can do that by showing this solidarity with this resolution and there is precedent for Congress overturning BIA decisions. It's not an easy one, it's not a politically easy one to do, but it is the morally just one to do for a population that is severely underrepresented, not only in our classrooms and our classrooms and our boardrooms on these councils, but in the community. And so when you see them all here...
Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Octavio Solario. I'm here on behalf of the Moekma people, not only here, but that are on their campaign across the United States to Washington DC. I just want to say that not supporting their sovereignty is erasure and goes against the future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hello, council people. My name is Dez. I come here as an early childhood educator here and as a citizen in so-called San Jose. I am not part of the Moekma Aloni Tribe, but I am a proud descendant of indigenous peoples. And I'm here in solidarity to help support them and implore all of you, as I say it as a preschool teacher, to make a good choice today and make a good choice in supporting their federal recognition and give their people back to them from across the street and other places like in Berkeley. And the fact that we have to do this here is really patronizing to the people, to our ancestors that have been here way before San Jose started. So, thank you.
Thank you, next speaker. While you make your way to the microphone, I'd like to call Rich, it looks like Masiat, and Lisa Avila. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name's Alicia Sandoval. I am a tribal member of the Moekma Aloni Tribe. I am actually here representing the words of our Chairwoman Charlene Meja. And so I'm going to read because she is again on this extraordinary journey of our truth, our Trail of Truth. And so I'm going to read verbatim what she has asked of us to speak on. So it says, "Thank you for this opportunity to speak the truth about the political erasure of the unrecognized tribe of California. California was one of the most brutal occupiers of the native lands. And although you may think that California Indian wars are over, I am here to tell you that California Indian wars never ended. This was against the indigenous population, continues today, and although it's taken on a new, more political form, it is no less violent and no less destructive to our culture, traditions, and community. And it is no less intent on ensuring the eradication of Indian tribes in the San Francisco Bay Area. Before she passed, Senator Feinstein told me she would not support the Moekma restoration because she didn't want the Indian tribe in San Francisco. Her exact words were she did not want an Indian tribe in her backyard. Governor Newsom refused to acknowledge or include the unrecognized tribes in his apologies for California genocide. And today, he refuses to meet Moekma to discuss creating a process for state recognition of California tribes, a process that sixteen states have already implemented. Kamala Harris, as Senator, told our previous Chairwoman she doesn't want to get involved in Indian affairs. She made it clear she does not care about Indian country. And you are all witness this recent attacks on the litigious legitimacy by Zoe Lofgren and Anna Ishu. There are the colonizers who still live among us and they continue their attempts to take away our sovereignty rights. It's true that history..."
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening, oh, good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm excited to be up here because I represent the Moekma Aloni Tribe. I've been sitting on the council for the tribe for over twenty-five years. Also, I've been a pastor, a pastor in a church for thirty-one years. And also, my grandmother been fighting for recognition and she passed away at ninety-two. My mother passed away two years ago at ninety-one. And I'm fighting now for my family and I'm seventy-four and we're going to continue fighting. I got my other children behind me fighting because we deserve justice and we have to have justice. It's enough, this whole thing that we're talking about is all about finances. And what they're saying is that, the senators are saying that they don't want another casino in California. But nevertheless, they already have applications to put, I think it's Great Gen Rancheria, put an application in to build a new casino in Vallejo. But the whole thing is they said they don't want no more casinos here. So that's kind of like an insult to injury for us. You know, we came today and we were here, what, a couple weeks ago or three weeks ago? And they said they didn't want to make a decision and we will make a decision and come back. Well, we came back and now we understand there's not going to be a decision. So we came here today to be celebrated, not to be tolerated. And we have to stand and you have to stand with us because we need justice.
Thank you, next speaker. I'd also like to call down Maddy Dressler, Dr. Wilcox, and Kay Black.
Good afternoon, San Jose City Council. My name is Lisa Avila and my father, who has a hard time walking, he is here with me, Arthur Sanchez. We stand before you today as proud members of the Moekma Aloni Tribe. My father is one of our elder members. My father watched his cousin Rosemary Canberra lead our tribe's fight for forty-three years to get our government to recognize our existence. He was a contractor for many years in San Jose. He saw her fight big developers to prevent the violation of our ancestral burial grounds. He remembers the time she stopped work on a site he was on because he had uncovered burial grounds. We are Moekma, we are members of the Moekma Aloni. We have preserved our culture, our identity, and our deep connections to this land. And despite your attempts to trying to keep us quiet, we say no more. We have had enough of the political games and the mistreatment. We've had enough of the corruption. A politician's legacy is built by their actions. Many have, they vote, mainly how they vote on some issues. Many politicians have a tarnished legacy due to voting in favor of connection, social injustice. Please don't be one of those politicians. Be a politician whose legacy will be written in a positive light, a politician who will be known as a promoter of justice. Do the right thing today and I urge you to vote to bring the resolution to the floor and vote.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hello, very nice to see you here today. My name is Michael Wilcox. I was hired as an anthropology professor at Stanford University in two thousand and one. But I also lived here. I grew up in the area, was born in Robid City. And my father's family are from Cochan Territory, Yuma, Arizona. My grandfather was relocated here after the war. I say this because the entire time I grew up here, I never heard the name of the Moekma Aloni Tribe, not once. I'm ashamed to say that I'd never heard that there was a tribe here. And I never met anybody until I was hired at Stanford. And I've asked the question why and I've devoted my career to answering that question why. So I know that the tribe has been here, the ancestors of the Moekma Aloni, for as long as anybody can know. Archaeologically, they go back twelve to fifteen thousand years. Most of those sites are beneath the surface of the bay because the presence of the Moekma Aloni people predates the formation of the San Francisco Bay. They watch climate change happen in real time. We think about the Mission Period as being the center of things. The Missions are only here for sixty-four years. That's a tiny period of time when you look at ten to twenty thousand years of known occupation. For comparison, we know that Ireland has only inhabited about four to five thousand years ago. So this is a deep stretch of time. We have court testimony that I've uncovered with some colleagues of mine at History San Jose that talks about resistance from the Moekma Aloni people going back to the eighteen thirties, eighteen forties. And finally, that stopped when the tribe was relocated from Mission Dolores and Mission Santa Clara to the East Bay. The rancheria is called Alisal, it was purchased by Phoebe Hearst, and in an act of irony, the tribe was declared extinct by Crowber. And I'm here to recommend, to remedy that situation as an anthropologist. And I ask you to recognize the presence of this group of people.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hi, my name is Maddy Dressler. Today, I stand before you to express my unwavering support of the Moekma Aloni Tribe's pursuit of federal recognition. The Moekma Aloni, the original stewards of the Bay Area, have a rich history steeped in culture, resilience, and connection to the land that has persisted for thousands of years. To deny us federal recognition is to overlook not only our historical significance, but also our ongoing contributions to the preservation of our cultural heritage. Federal recognition is essential for the Moekma Aloni Tribe to protect our people, protect our identity, and to access essential resources that will help lift our community up. It is an important step toward rectifying historical injustices and offering an opportunity for our tribe to thrive in a modern context. Recognizing the Moekma Aloni means acknowledging our history, empowering us to contribute even more significantly to our region. We all benefit from a diverse tapestry of cultures and voices. Supporting the federal recognition of the Moekma Aloni Tribe is a commitment to justice, equity, and respect for indigenous voices. Today, we ask you to honor our past and help us pave the way for our future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, next speaker. I'd also like to call Raymond Ortiz, Marisol Diaz, and Liliana Miranda.
Thank you, council members, for the opportunity to speak today in support of the city of San Jose's resolution on federal recognition for the Moekma Aloni Tribe. My name is Caitlin Black. I'm a Bay Area resident, born and raised on Moekma Aloni land. I'm a graduate of Santa Clara University and a former employee of Stanford University, both of which are institutions who have committed ethnic cleansing and genocide of the Moekma Aloni people on their native land. The eradication and erasure of the Moekma Aloni people continues today and therefore their sovereign rights to this land must be recognized. I implore the city council to pass this resolution, calling on Congress to recognize the Moekma Aloni Tribe. Federal recognition is one small step, but a significant one, to begin the landback process and to begin the healing of generational trauma inflicted on the Moekma Aloni people by the local, state, and federal governments of the United States. As a community member, I strongly believe it is in the best interest of the city of San Jose to build trust and partnership with the Moekma Aloni Tribe and all indigenous people in our community by passing this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hello, my name is Raymond Luna Ortiz, born and raised in San Jose. I'd just like the council to acknowledge how old San Jose is and all the different violent hardships and fighting the Moekma have had to deal with in between from multiple invaders till this day. So take that into consideration when making this long overdue decision for recognition. I grew up on East Side San Jose. I went to Linda Vista, Joseph George, James Lick. I love this city, I want to continue to love this city. I lived here my whole life and I would like to see my city make the right decision. And I hope the next time we come back here, we don't have to keep coming back here. It's very patronizing, it's very, to be quite frank, it's disrespectful. And you have a doctor right here that can provide you with anything that you need to know. He even asked if he had any questions and no one spoke up. So, you know, please make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hoshi Truhi, Kanak Liliana, good evening, councilmen. My name is Liliana Miranda and I am eleven years old. I'm a member of the Moekma Aloni Tribe. I ask for your help with providing a resolution for my people. Passing this resolution will be a big impact to my future and future generations. I have found my way dancing in ceremonies with my tribe, making my own regalia and speaking our language that was taken away from us. We are putting in the work and being a tribe so people consider passing this resolution. We are not all dead. We are still standing on our land today. Thank you for your time and consideration. Gish Hoshi, Ekanah, thank you very much.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hello, my name is Marisol Diaz and I'm an indigenous woman born and raised here in San Jose in Moekma Aloni Territory. I'm here to support my sister, Chairwoman Charlene Nishme, and my Moekma relatives and all the indigenous people here in this city. I was invited to join the Trail of Truth. I just got back from South Dakota. I spent ten days at the Pine Ridge Reservation where we were invited by the White Plume and the Camp family. It was an honor and I was very lucky to be able to spend one-on-one time with Lexi, Alex White Plume, Lexi, Percy White Plume, and Taween Ramona White Plume. And I just want to actually address my relatives here and remind you that we are supported as indigenous people. They reminded me of what it means to be oyate, which is in their Lakota language of the Oglala Lakota Nation. And we are one. We are one and we are here. We're not going anywhere. We'll be back. And just know that all American tribes, many American tribes across the nation are standing with you. They send their love, they're sending their prayers, and we'll see you in DC on Indigenous Peoples' Days. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker. Um, before you come up, I'd like to call Caitlin Torres, um, Louis, Louis Sher- my microphone keeps turning off. Um, maybe if I hold the button, it'll work. Louis Sharamanti Jr., Sean Schrum, and Mimi S.
Um, I'm not really a person to really come up here and speak, whether it's political, whether it's in front of anyone. Um, but I actually watched the video of the last time we came, and one thing that really caught my eye is that I look at all you, and all you guys are all looking at your computers, looking at your phones, and not showing any remorse. Especially that my youth or the youth are coming up here to speak upon, you know, trauma. It's trauma for them because they have their own family that is not here for months because they have to do a trail, because they came to you guys for support, and we don't have your support. And something that I do like to, um, recognize is that, uh, we had a first time after twenty years, we did a youth camp at Santa Clara University. And one thing that definitely stood to me was the fact that there is a house that has more than five thousand of our ancestors under there, and not, nothing is being happened. And the fact that you all are definitely learning and definitely reviewing everyone's speaking and reviewing your history on whatever you would love to look at and whatever you want to put your potential on looking at, I definitely feel that, that there's stuff that you are not focusing on and not showing no remorse. You guys are really only focusing on, on politics and gaming. And if gaming really is the problem, it, it really shouldn't be. Something that is, is what I would hope to be, happen in the next, hopefully, year after going to DC in the next months, was that we have an actual land and a space to pray, a space to dance, a space to, you know, be in that type of prayer. For me, it doesn't have to do with gaming, it doesn't have to do with politics. For me, it's prayer and, and dancing as a ghost dancer and dancing for my grandma Geraldine Lopez, who was here and, and definitely spoke to one of you and definitely I know a lot of my-
Thank you, next speaker.
Hello, my name is Sean Schrum. If any of you with your vast experience and, uh, lengthy educations have any knowledge of anywhere in the country where, uh, land is being given back or land is being given, uh, gaming licenses, tell me any place across the country where the government is working hand over fist to, to help out native people in a very progressive way. I understand that there's been some interference from some, uh, local politicians. They are not the experts on the Aloni people. Those experts are in this room, have been here often, and will return. They're here fighting for their name. They're here fighting for their recognition. The last time I was in Louisiana, I went to the Whitney Plantation, and, um, it's a reconstruction of a, uh, of a Creole indigo plantation. And when I got to those, uh, weathered wooden shacks, I kept hearing, uh, my friend's mother tell me their, uh, the story of, of when she and her mother were interned in camps in, in the United States during World War II. And it, it was the treatment of her mother that she always, that she, that was, she was always the, uh, the most upset about, the disrespect. They told her she wasn't who she was. They told her, "You're not an American. You're an, you're an enemy alien." You know? Sign some paperwork or we'll send you someplace worse. We're here today to fight racism. My contemporaries, we have lived with, we have lived with, uh, the survivors of the Holocaust. We have lived with survivors of internment camps. We have lived with survivors of, uh, all kinds of, uh, maltreatment. You have a choice today. Your country needs you now more than ever to fight racism.
My name's Louis Sharamanti, uh, Jr. I was born in San Jose. My family lived here for a hundred and twenty years. Uh, we have the oldest business in the city that's family-owned. Uh, I'm not a Moa- a member of the Moakmaloni tribe. I am, uh, Assembly District Delegate within the, uh, California Democratic Party as well as a member of South Bay Indigenous Solidarity, which supports the concept of a resolution being passed, uh, to, uh, in regard to the Moakmaloni, uh, restoration of federal recognition. Uh, the Moakmaloni tribe has basically resided in this region beyond, uh, historic records. And, uh, I do want to remind the council that the Democratic Party of Santa Clara County, Santa Cruz County, San Francisco, Contra Costa County, and San Mateo County have passed resolutions supporting the tribe in this effort. Um, the delisting of the tribe from the federal register is basically an example of cultural erasure and technically genocide because it's, it had the intent of destroying a people. It wasn't based on any solid evidence, uh, the delisting, and experts at the time argued against the delisting. Please consider actually passing a resolution on this issue. Thank you.
Next speaker. I'd also like to call on Jay, Wendy G., Carla Torres, and Louise Bialik.
May I? Good afternoon, Mayor Mahan and city council members. My name is Mimi Spreadberry. I'm a settler colonizer. I live in San Jose, District Four. I have lived in San Jose for twenty years. I'm also a member of South Bay Indigenous Solidarity. I have been working in human rights, diversity, equity, and inclusion and conservation for over ten years. I've probably spoken to you about other of those issues. I'm here today to support our neighbors, the Moakma Aloni tribe, who are documented to have been in this area for millennia. To further diversity, equity, and con- inclusion goals of the city, San Jose needs to please pass this resolution supporting federal recognition of the Moakma Aloni tribes to start the mutual healing process. Federal recognition would allow the tribe to hold land in trust, allow tribal members to access federal programs and services, among other fundamental rights. Please show solidarity and vote yes on this resolution to support federal recognition of the Moakma Aloni tribe. Thank you for your time, and thank you for accepting public comments.
Thank you, next speaker.
Greetings, Mayor Mahan and city council members. My name is Wendy Greenfield, and I'm representing the South Bay Chapter of Jewish Voice for Peace, a peace and human rights organization based in the South Bay since nineteen ninety-seven. We urge the city council to pass a resolution supporting the Moakma Aloni tribe in their efforts to achieve federal tribal recognition. The Moakma Aloni's story is a clear injustice. Historically, their tribe was recognized as the Verona Band of Alameda County, and at no point did Congress terminate this recognition. The consequences of the lack of recognition are dire. The Moakmaloni lack access to crucial federal programs and services designed to help indigenous communities, such as educational assistance, healthcare services through the Indian Health Service, and support for tribal housing. Moreover, the tribe is barred from taking land into trust to build housing, exasperating the pressure of gentrification and threatening to displace their people from their twelve-thousand-year homeland. All current members of the tribe are direct descendants of the federally recognized Verona Band, and despite genomic studies linking the Moakmaloni to this land, institutions like UC Berkeley continue to store tens of thousands of their ancestors and artifacts in their basements, depriving the tribe of the dignity of property laying their ancestors to rest. Denial of their tribal status is denial of their human rights. Jewish Voice for Peace South Bay urges the City of San Jose to support the Moakmaloni's fight for rec- for federal recognition, reparation, and autonomy. As tribal members ride on horseback to present their case in Washington, join the path towards justice. To quote Deuteronomy, "Justice, justice you must pursue." Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker. I'd also like to note that I've, I have one anonymous card, and I have now called every name on every, you can go ahead with the microphone. I've called every card, so if you did not hear your name, um, you can come on down.
Good afternoon, my name is Carla Torres. I'm with La Raza Roundtable and also representing Native Voice, and we want to make sure that you all know that we support the Moakma Aloni people and the resolution. But I also want to say thank you for recognizing today the Mexican Independence Day in our people. I think it's important, um, but I also think when we do that, we can't just stand back and not also help and support our relatives, right? Our Aloni, our indigenous people. Being an indigenous person myself, as when we see injustice to one group, we have to stand up and help because that's an injustice to all of us. I don't know how much power and authority you all have. I don't have the history of the resolution. I wasn't going to speak, but I felt compelled to come and support, you know, the Aloni people. But I will say this, if you're not able to pass a resolution as is for whatever reason, could you at least reconsider and meet with the people and find out what the middle ground can be? You know, um, there, maybe there's some things that we don't know, there's some barriers that you have that maybe the people don't know, but maybe meet with them at minimum and let them know what the barriers are and see if there's some way that we can come to some middle ground or some help. Um, and I think, lastly, I want to say, if the city council is not able to do that, to the young people, you are brave, you're awesome, and run for city council. Then you can make the changes you need.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, my name is Jose Roman. I'm an immigrant from Peru and living here more as half of my life, and I've been the subject of discrimination the whole time since I've been living here. So I live in a housing for ten years, but, uh, we got a manager. Her name is Marisol Guñac, and I want to make a complaint about her for the not equal treatment. So it says that, uh, it's considered discrimination and it's prohibited by the Fair Housing Act. So I'm the only target of, uh, breaking the rules when other people do break the rules. So where is the equality? I mean, I feel discriminated and also feel like they're not treating me right. So please, if we can do something about, assign someone empowered that can deliver it like, you know, fairly for, you know, for everybody, not just, you know, being, um, discriminated. It's like the worst thing that can happen to anybody. So I think that's why we've seen a lot of people in the streets because nobody cares and there's no love. So sorry about the emotions, but I mean, like, I can say a lot, but you guys gave me two minutes, so thank you for your time.
And sir, I'm sorry to, yeah, thank you, and I'm sorry you've had this experience. Sounds like you're talking on a different item than the recognition of the Moakmaloni. Uh, we may be able to get you some, maybe Stephen and my team can connect you with our housing department has some resources for tenants' rights. There may be some things we can point you to. But thank you for being here.
Yep.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good afternoon, my name's Louise Bialik, and I'm from Los Angeles. I flew out here to talk to you. I am a former alum of, uh, UCLA, or I'm an alum of UCLA. And on May first, I was on campus and noticed, uh, there was a January sixth event that happened, which shocked me. And I didn't see how this could happen because like what UC Regent could allow this to happen. And I did some research and I found out that it became, it was my former professor who was dismissed for being a fraud and pretendian, um, at UCLA in nineteen ninety-nine. And when I learned that he became chair of Greaton Rancheria and has drummed up a campaign to prevent the voices of the Moakma from being federally recognized, it, it motivated me to come here and talk to you and ask you the question, "At what point does generational systemic trauma of indigenous Americans expire for a sovereign existing people who have naturally resided in the Bay Area for ten thousand years?" Maybe it's because the Moakma homeland has been hostilely overtaken by government, which parcels Aboriginal land to high-paying stakeholders. Like for instance, do you know that Google gave Zoe Lofgren sixty-six thousand dollars this year and eighty-seven thousand in twenty-twenty-two? I don't know what she got in twenty-twenty-three. But, uh, Greaton Rancheria has gone all up and down, California and all over, uh, DC to give thirty-two thousand to Gavin Newsom and four million to the Democrat Party in, um, DC. And in turn, he was granted a seat as a UC Regent.
Thank you, next speaker.
I'm here to advocate passing the resolution. And even though I'm not Moakma Aloni, nor am I Native American, I'm here because it's the right thing to do. The Moakma Aloni people have suffered through centuries of racial oppression and trauma, and they deserve federal recognition. As elected officials, the city council has a duty to represent the will and the values of the people. Delaying the vote from one meeting to the next will not make us go away, and we will not give up until the resolution is passed. The time is now to do the right thing, so please do the right thing and support the Moakma Aloni. Thank you.
Thank you, I have one last card.
Good late afternoon, city council. My name is Richard. I'm a scholar of the University of Southern California, where I received my graduate degree, and the number one thing that they taught me there in leadership was, um, your intent. And as a college professor, uh, for the past ten years in the Bay Area, my intent is always on behalf of the students and the well-being of individuals. So I'm just hoping, um, you guys give Moakma their justice. Um, the thing that hurts me a lot is I try to get Moakma involved in our activities at the colleges, and a lot of them don't have the funding, um, to come to college, and they don't apply for the scholarships, uh, for Native Americans because they're not federally recognized. It's a lot of these little, um, specifics that, that are hurting the tribe and the youth from prospering. Um, I submitted to the city clerk documents, supporting from professors at Stanford and world-renowned researchers from around the world that have, uh, linked the DNA genomes of the Moakma tribe, um, to being here for thousands of years. So I'm just wondering how that could be overlooked. Um, and I know it's got to be political, um, because if you have proof from world-renowned researchers, um, linking the, the ancestor history, um, and then we get, you know, thirty years ago, Moakma is honored from the mayor, and then they take it away, uh, that's a severe injustice. I'm just trying to understand what this is really all about. Also, if you read the thousands of pages of regarding federal recognition, like this doctor says over here, it's severely flawed because if you look into it, they say there's are these rules, but then also at the same time, they make exceptions for tribes that they benefit from. So it's like, ask the questions, just do the right thing. When you go home and speak to your members, be happy.
Thank you. All, all speaker cards have been called, so I'm going back to council.
Great. Thank you, Tony, and thank you all for taking the time to be here and testify here, public comment. We appreciate hearing everyone's opinion. Um, we're gonna, so now we've heard the staff presentation, had an opportunity to hear from members of the community. Now we come back to the council, which is an opportunity for council members to ask questions, engage in dialogue. Just remind folks of what Solma said at the beginning, this is an informational item today, and I'm gonna, um, we'll, we'll come around the days here, but I'm gonna start off with Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, mayor. Appreciate it, and I want to thank, uh, all members of the tribe and advocates here in the room. We're gonna, one, one moment, we're, we're gonna bring you up, uh, for being here to advocate for the recognition of the Moakma. Um, just a, in a few minutes, I'm gonna bring up, uh, Tribal Councilmember Richard. Actually, you could come down if you'd like. Um, I just want to just mention that, um, my, our Brown Act was under the, um, impression that the specialists here, and I want to thank you for being here. Thank you, sir. I was gonna talk about the whole picture of federal recognition, not just like the nuts and bolts of like what the legal language would be, but how it’s been controversial, how the government has weaponized it against unrecognized tribes, how other tribes come in and politicize it because they don’t want competition in the gaming industry. That’s what I thought the presentation was gonna be like, but unfortunately, I don’t know if you were told, sir, but unfortunately not. And I thought, and our Brown Act was also under the influence that we were gonna hear about the history of the Moakma, but I gotta say that I’m actually kind of disappointed in what we heard here today. So, you know, and that’s nothing against you, sir, because you were only told, you know, what you were told, but I was under the influence, and we were gonna get the whole entire picture, and I just want to make that statement heard, because I told the tribe we were gonna hear that. But I just wanted to invite a representative from the tribe to please come up. You know, they told me that unfortunately, we couldn’t give you warranted time, but I wanted to give you time out of my own questions —
Thank you.
— to please mention a statement from the tribe.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I will continue with the words from our chairwoman, Charlene. So, it’s true that history has never been kind to our people. White settlers were never kind to our people, and the city of San Jose was not kind to my people. The Pueblos of San Jose was chosen to be the first capital of California. The city we call San Jose was the birthplace of the war of extermination against my people. San Jose, under Governor Peter Burnett, sanctioned the enslavement and murder of California Indians. Now, I know that you council members believe that those days are long gone and that it’s in ancient history, and you likely believe that you bear no responsibility for the genocide of the Alone people. And I would agree with you, that you are not to blame for the previous administration policies of extermination. But when you ran for elected office, you probably told us in the community how you would do better than the past administration, how you would bring change, maybe you promised hope, or a new vision of community, a community that thrived for equality and inclusion, a community rooted in social justice. Well, today is your day to show who you are. Show us how you can do better. Show us all that the truth matters more than the political gain. Or you can simply look the other way while the corruption continues to pose our hopes for — or poison our hopes for a better, more — or more justice. But this time, the whole city will bear witness. Today was supposed to be the day that the San Jose City Council brought our resolution of support to the full council for a floor vote. But because of Zoe — because of Zoe Lofgren, behind-the-scenes effort to squash this resolution, we are here today protesting against them — protesting rather than celebrating. Make no mistake, gaming tribes that have brought — have bought the Democratic Party, and they have their foot firmly on the necks of the wrongly unrecognized tribes of California. The casino tribes are spending millions, bankrolling the Democratic Party to ensure our political erasure for nothing more than greed. That’s why the two of California’s most powerful Democrats, Zoe Lofgren and Anna Eshu, are both opposed to our reaffirmation. That’s why Governor Newsom takes money from the Greaton Rancheria and then authorizes an expansion of their casino, and that’s why Kamala Harris has ignored Moakma, even though she spent her entire career on our homeland. Lofgren and Eshu admits that we deserve recognition, and they even offered legislation to affirm our status, but they demanded that first, we need to sign away the rights and freedoms of our children to pursue gaming in the future. Zoe Lofgren and Anna Eshu outright lied and betrayal of the Moakma Alone people will forever stain our legacy, just as Peter Burnett will forever be remembered as the butcher of California Indians. So, too, we — so, too, will these California politicians be remembered as the corruption puppets of special events? Whatever reports the city staffers present to you today, I hope it will be based on the four decades of vigorous academic research done on our tribe by experts at the highest level of academic, instead of relying on lawyers, lobbyists, and politicians to tell them what to present. I have already responded in writing to the concerns of this council and have supplied every one of you with infutable proof, backed by documents, backed by real evidence of our sovereignty and continued existence. And you all aware that in 2022, a federal district court held that Moakma is entitled to sovereignty, immunity, protesting — protecting federal-recognized tribes. The court found that Moakma satisfied the test of tribal status. To be clear, crystal clear, the sovereign immunity comes from being sovereign. In closing, I want to point that all — I want to make a point that all people have a breaking point, a point where they can stand no more, no more corruption, no more injustice. We, Moakma, are at that breaking point. Our children are being gentrified out of our 10, our 10,000-year homeland. Our ancestors sit in boxes and can’t be repatriated, and our members are denied access to eagle feathers for our ceremonial practices. And to add insult to injury, California politicians oppose us because they claim they don’t want any more casinos in California. But Grattan Rancheria is expanding their casino in South — in Scotts Valley is quietly proposing a new casino in Vallejo in our homeland. Zoe Lofgren and Anna Eshu are silent on these casino projects because these tribes donate heavy to the Democratic Party. In the end, it’s —
Thank you.
Counsel — excuse me, it’s this the — this is the council member’s time, if he has any other questions. I think we are close to 10 minutes, but if you want to ask him a question, or we can come back around to you.
Thank you, appreciate it. I thought we were gonna get a little bit of history of the Moakma tribe, but I also appreciate your statements as well. You know, I’m the one who authored this memo in partnership with Deb Davis. I’m the one who — council member Deb Davis, I’m the one who prioritized this discussion. Unfortunately, I’m only one council member, and we need six council members to pass the resolution. And, you know, we read the writing on the wall, and we want to make sure that this conversation continues. That’s why we made this an informational item, instead of it just dying today due to lack of support. But I want to — I want to thank my colleagues in our Brown Act for this item, you know, and while I know the council is not prepared today to take a vote on this resolution, I’m hoping that we can revisit this discussion in the future. The Moakma Alone have suffered long and historic injustices, and the lack of federal recognition has cut them off from the federal programs that are supposed to address those harms. And what the Moakma are asking for goes beyond any electoral politics. They are simply asking to be granted the same rights and sovereignty as all Native Americans in the United States. To not do this is to maintain the status quo of erasure of our First Nations and Indigenous people. But I’m also hoping that this discussion can be part of a more robust conversation about the — about how the city can be a partner to the Moakma, as we both work to empower one another and address the common challenges we face. But I just want, you know, the members of the tribe know that, you know, we’re not giving up, we’re just gonna take some time to prepare another approach. Thank you so much.
Thank you, council member. We’re gonna go over to Councilor Batra next.
Thank you very much for those comments from all the Indigenous people and the others who came and spoke today. I was also like council member Ortiz, I was expecting to learn about those three items which would help prepare the council to be able to vote in a proper manner. And I’m gonna ask just a couple of questions so that I get some clarification. If we do pass the resolution, I’m not sure if I picked up, what happens next?
If you pass the resolution?
Yeah.
You pass the resolution?
No, no. Not today, but let’s say if we do pass this — if this was a resolution to pass, and we do pass it, what happens next? How does — I’m trying to see is, where does it lead us? What does it achieve for the community we are trying to help?
Is that on there? If you pass the resolution, what you’re doing is making a statement of where the city stands. Does that have an impact on the federal process? The best answer I can give you is maybe. And I say that because the administrative process, as I have read it in the Federal Register, has closed the avenue of the federal acknowledgement component, which may not remain closed. And I’m gonna — I’ll explain that here, is that as we are sitting here, there are consultations going on with the Bureau of Indian Affairs and only federally recognized tribes to provide an appeal, a secondary appeal process with additional information. Because the reliance of the documentation of continual Indian community, continued government from 1900 hasn’t been met, that’s the question — the resolution doesn’t do a lot to support that. What the resolution does do is it states where you, as a city, stand. It sends a message and adds support to any potential congressional legislation. And I will, as I’ve said many times when I’ve been asked about this, I say, you know, those are political questions that you, as a council, will have to answer. So...
Okay. So, thank you very much for that. What I’m trying to see is the amount of energy and time which is being spent by the community which is affected by this thing. Are we really giving them a commensurate reward by doing, if we could pass the resolution, which is all the thing we can do? Are we really giving them in return what they’re really looking for and what will help them to get where they need to get to?
I’m not able to answer if you’re going to give Moakma what they’re looking for. They’re right here.
Okay.
Okay. But I can — but I can tell you this is —
That’s okay. All that’s — okay.
Let me — let me share this with you.
Yeah.
There are examples here in California. Specifically, we’re gonna pick out Eureka, California, which is about five and a half hours north of here on 101. What the city of Eureka did was recognize their role in the attempted extermination of the Wiat people. And in such, transferred back to the Wiat, the city-owned property that held their center of the world and the place of their creation. So, if you’re asking an outsider, what it is that the city can do is the city can begin to look at other options that restore the land base that was taken and look for avenues in which it can partner with Moakma to have the ancestors returned, which is extremely complicated and governed by an entirely set of different laws.
Okay. Thank you for that. Got one other question. Has there been ever an example of a city being able to help through its resolutions and all that, where the BIA has denied it, appeal has denied it, and 20 years of effort has not gotten anywhere? Has there been another place, another tribe which has been able to get that kind of a recognition?
There are examples of that. We can get to very specifics, I can send you some of those, but usually that happens when there is a change in elected officials. And that’s — if you look about the example that what is out there, it’s usually that there is a change in the makeup of the United States Congress, there’s a change in the makeup of the local municipality, political makeup. So, it’s not just dependent on the city doing it, there’s another component to this that you have to be aware of, and once again, that is a political decision.
Thank you very much for giving those clarifications, and I thank every one of you who has come here today and given us a piece of information which hopefully will help us get you what you’re looking for. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, just before I turn to Councilor Torres, I just want to clarify that last question. So, my briefing materials say that Congress has never granted federal recognition to a tribe that was denied by BIA and had all appeals exhausted. Is that not true? I have thought I just heard you say something different, but that’s what our — what my briefing doc says.
Congress has, in very limited instances, overruled the BIA.
After all appeals have been exhausted, like this case?
Or as they’re right at the edge of all appeals being exhausted.
At the edge of all appeals.
Yeah, I’ve read — I’ve read Congressman Esche’s letter and Congressman Lofgren’s letter. I disagree with what they have said, because there have been instances where both the congressional and appellate process have been simultaneous, and the appeals have ended and then Congress passed. But it’s highly, highly unusual. It’s highly unusual for it to happen.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that point of fact, but that’s helpful, thank you. Okay, so I’m gonna turn to Councilor Torres.
Great, thank you, mayor. And thank you, council member Ortiz, for bringing this to the body. I’m very disappointed that it’s also an informational item. As a — as somebody who knows our Moakma Alone tribe really well and has friends and family in the Moakma Alone tribe, I would love for — I would love to vote for it as your city council member, as your representative. But unfortunately, that’s not — that’s not — we’re not able to do that today, as council member Ortiz just stated. Unfortunately, this is an informational item, so we can’t motion for the — to pass this memo, unfortunately, and I would love to. What I do want to say is, 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 is I think it’s important to gain support amongst my council colleagues, and today’s presentation did not help at all. Today’s presentation should have been a little bit better organized. I’m a visual person, I think it’s an injustice that we didn’t have a PowerPoint presentation, or that somebody from our own city staff didn’t do the presentation. So, I’m really disappointed in today’s presentation. So, I hope, Zulma, we can come better prepared next time, next time around, because it is an injustice to our Moakma Alone community. It’s — I’m, again, I’m — it’s just only me, I’m more of a visual person, so I hope that we can — that we can — that we can have better presentations when it comes to — when it comes to explaining what’s here at hand. I do have two questions, I know —
Council member, council member, if I may —
Yes.
— because I think it’s important to provide the appropriate context. At the August 7th Rules Committee meeting, staff was directed to do exactly what we did today. So, if there’s a different expectation, then we would be more than welcome to receive that direction. But I just want to be clear, because I think it’s important that we kind of set the record straight about that. On August 7th, at the Rules Committee meeting, we were asked to provide the background on the federal recognition, and that this was just gonna be an informational memo. I actually covered that Rules Committee memo — the meeting for Assistant City Manager Lee Wilcox, and I asked to clarify a question, so is this just gonna be informational? And the answer was yes. And so, I just want to clarify that for the record.
Okay, great, thank you. And I’m sure — I’m not in the Brown Act, so I’m sure council member Ortiz and folks on the — on the Brown Act will have that conversation offline. But again, these are, you know, these are — these are my recommendations, my opinions, my concerns, and I’m sure the concerns of our Moakma Alone tribe folks too, so. I do — I do have a question. I know that council member Ortiz mentioned it, but I’m — who can answer why — because it’s an informational item, why can’t we motion to support this resolution?
I think that’s a question for Nora.
Thank you, council member. It’s not noticed for action, and it would have to be noticed for action so that the public would know that there’s potential action today. That’s why. Can be brought back, something else, but there’s not a vote today.
Okay.
And that again was a decision of the Rules Committee a couple of weeks ago, I forget what it was.
So, it has to go back to rules so we can take action. Okay. The other question is, is — and I hope that they could answer it, is because I only could keep up with what’s happening here on the dais or concerns here in the city of San Jose. Is there a federal bill, a federal bill or a state bill that an elected official on that body is championing to recognize the Moakma Alone tribe, a federal or state bill?
Not that I’m aware of, no.
So, we — so, we don’t — we don’t know if there’s a federal, state bill that —
If there were to be a federal bill, it would come from — the Congress has always acquiesced to the local congressional representatives. So, if there were a bill coming at the federal level, it would come from the local congressional representatives, and I don’t believe they — level, it would come from the local congressional representatives, and I don't believe they have anything in the works.
Okay.
At the state level, there is no process in California to recognize state, tribes by the state. We don't have that process, which is a, an anomaly for a state that has this many federally and non-federally recognized tribes.
Okay. So, I, I know we, we, there's our, there's, we have congressional representatives who, who are at odds with our Aloni Maukmaa, so if, if, if there is a bill, such bill, that someone authors, I'm asking because on this body, I, our IRG folks come and ask us bills to, to support, and so maybe that's a way for us to go, to go through? Maybe going through our, our IRG group or department, or whatever, whatever it's called, to support, for our city to support the Maukmaa Aloni tribe? So obviously, there, there isn't, so I, I guess we can't, we can't go that route, unfortunately. But, but, you know, I, I, I stress to my colleagues, you already, you heard, you heard, you heard the plight of our Maukmaa Aloni community. It's, it's very sad that, that they are being erased, it's very sad that, that, you know, they've been wiped out, it's very sad that they don't have federal recognition, and I hope that we as a city can come together and, and recognize, and tell, well, let our Maukmaa Aloni folks know that our city should be supporting them in their fight to, to get federally recognized, so, thank you. And that's it for me, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember. We'll go to Councilman Foley.
Thank you. First, I want to thank all of the members of the public and members of the Maukmaa Aloni tribe who are here to speak on your behalf and to share with me and my colleagues your plight, your pain, and your concerns, and how you'd like us to help. I am, I am not unsympathetic to what you had to say, I listened to every one of you who came forward, and I truly appreciate you taking the time to being here. I always approach these things too as open-minded and really don't come in here with any preconceived notions on how I wish to proceed. So thank you first and foremost, and for being here, and I honor your presence and your willingness to come forward and share with us. To Dr. Malloy, I did have some questions for you, and your statements, I, I found your presentation informative, because I, the, you, you made it clear that there are three ways that they could achieve federal, the Maukmaa could achieve federal recognition, recognition, not ignition, recognition, and that the federal recognition process through the BIA has seven points. We've been told that they were denied their application based on three points. I have yet to hear what those three points are. Is one the 1900, the trigger of 1900 in being able to track their existence since 1900?
The three points are, I'm going to work from memory here, is the demonstration of continuous authority over the membership. So basically, you, you're recording this meeting, you're keeping minutes of this meeting, you have a record of everything you've done, that's the component.
Okay.
The other thing is, have they, were they recognized by other entities? What strikes me as interesting is the historical record of cities, and the county may have all of that in its minutes, but I don't know if the cities or counties were brought into looking at that, there may have been interaction. Those are the components. Now, like I said, is, if you don't know you have to keep these records, if these aren't things that you're used to doing, it, it doesn't, you know, tribal governments didn't keep minutes. That was, that's a, that's a Western concept, that's a Western thing, prior to contact, and a lot of tribes continue to operate on an oral basis. So we're asking tribes to conform to a Western concept of government that isn't how they've always operated.
Which seems contrary to how the Maukmaa and indigenous people have operated. They, they, word of mouth and passing on their stories, person to person, is historically how they've documented their existence. So I'm not sure, I could document my existence, or my histories, the history of my family's existence, back to Western Europe, without doing a lot of records, but it wouldn't show that I lived here or had any access to land or property or, or heritage in this area. So I think that's an arbitrary date, and that's what I got from your information. You think it's an arbitrary date, too?
I do believe it's an arbitrary date, but it's the date we're working with, and I'm, you know, you live with what you've got.
I, I understand that. So you gave us two points, the authority stating that they've been in existence since 1900, and the other is the recognition by other. What's the third one? Or did I miss it?
I don't believe I told you, because I think I've got to go back and look it up, but we can pull the federal register document that has that listed, and that, that's right there. The pieces that the Bureau is claiming are not there are not because the Maukmaa have not continued to exist as a government, that is evident. Maukmaa Aloni is recognized by all federally recognized tribes in California and all other non-recognized tribes in California as a tribe, as a sovereign government. So the question here, what we're really negotiating here is the federal component of this, and I think that's one of the things that comes into the federal recognition process is, they don't really speak to the fact that the recognition from other tribes actually counts, and that's a detriment of the regulations.
Okay, thank you, I, I appreciate that. One thing, one other thing that I had hoped to get from your presentation was, how would, if this resolution, we're not voting on a resolution today, but if we were to bring it back, or in whatever form, what would that effect be on other tribes within San Jose or within Santa Clara County?
It would open, it wouldn't, it would have more of an indirect effect than a not, an indirect effect, and it would open the door to other tribes coming and requesting that. Where I would see a flaw in the proposed resolution that you were considering is that one of the sticking points that generally will cause a federally recognized tribe to oppose recognition is the way in which territorial boundaries are delineated. I, particularly here, they seem to be very, looking at how each of the different groups have laid out their tribal claims to the territory. It's very clear that they don't overlap in many instances, but I think that would be an area that could provide more support, is saying, pull in what the Maukmaa Aloni recognizes their territory, and that way, when future resolutions come before you, or future requests, you have a way of ensuring that you're not crossing over or causing conflict, or adding to conflict, or creating a situation that you don't want to be in.
Okay, thank you, that, that's very helpful, I appreciate that. That's it for me, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor, come in.
Thank you. I too want to thank everyone for coming, I know that you take time out of your busy day to share your thoughts and your feelings and your history with us, so thank you for that. I had a question, just following up on Councilmember Foley, you know, I'm just wondering, the example that you gave from Eureka, in terms of what they gave back to the tribe, was that territory, or, because I think that, you know, what you just said in terms of delineation of, you know, where, where is their sovereign nation, makes sense to me. So that would, you know, sort of entail, okay, trying to figure out, okay, where, where do they establish themselves, or what is their territory? So I'm just curious, is, is that what happened there in Eureka, or, I'm just wondering what they gave them that helped them, because, you know, in all of this, is extremely, what I found from your information is that it's extremely complicated, because there's so many layers, right? And as a city, we can only go so far, and the pathways to success is, you know, I mean, they've gone through federal, federal acknowledgement process, they can go through judicial action process, and, and now the door that maybe would be the congressional action process, right? And to demonstrate it as a sovereign nation, so I'm just curious, in terms of pathways to getting to kind of what Councilmember Batra was talking about in terms of, you know, what they want is, is, is acknowledgement, right? So...
Dr. Wilcox, going to staff on the dais.
Well, I'm, I'm asking the gentleman here.
Let's move to the Eureka example, so what Eureka actually did was gave parcels of land. So the Wiat Center of the World is a small island in the middle of Humboldt Bay, on which they were, there was a massacre in 1863. That land was, over time, came into the hands of the city and controlled by the city, and now, over 127-year process of movement, the city decided to return all of that land back to the tribe, so it was actual land. I'm trying to figure, I'm trying to figure out how to answer your next, the next point you made, is that the window, that the door that's open now is federal, is the congressional door.
Is the congressional, yeah.
And that door is controlled by the members of Congress, so...
So that, that is really the issue, whether or not there's a, there's, there's a, a member of Congress who'd be willing to bring this forward?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Ortiz, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Jimenez, your name disappeared, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, I was, you know, the more and more I'm listening to this, it seems to me it's more a political issue, and, but, and I'm not sure the city of San Jose is a proper forum, although I appreciate the, the interest in recognition and all, I think it's very important, and I, and I share the sentiments that have been expressed by my colleagues about just the native people and things that have happened to them over the, over the years in this country, and the unfortunate sort of way they've been treated by this particular government, or the United States government. The question I have, and to the extent you're able to answer it, can you speak a little bit about the legitimacy of the BIA and how, I mean, it's, it's a body that was created a long time ago, and I'm curious if you could talk a little bit about that? And before you answer, I would say that I also found your information interesting, informative, and helped me to better understand sort of the dynamics and the, and the sort of potential path forward, if you will, but if you can chat about that, or talk about that, that'd be helpful.
So the Bureau of Indian Affairs, as we know today, has a long history. It is the oldest agency in the United States government, and it's a holdover from the Indian office under British rule. It has long been staffed by individuals who, in the early part of its history, were land speculators, who had ties to the railroads, who operated in what we would simply call today a very illegal manner. It's also responsible for what we call, for what is known as the Bureau of Indian Education, which established the boarding schools throughout the United States. Many native people have a history with those schools that is not pleasant or positive, there was a great deal of both physical, mental, and sexual abuse that occurred in those schools. The only good thing that I will say that the schools did is, the very first woman ever confirmed by the United States Senate to an appointed position was the superintendent for the Bureau of Indian Education. The Bureau has often operated, and this was confirmed and held in the Cobell v. Salazar case, the Bureau is responsible for the federal trust responsibility, managing that, ensuring that tribes are provided with everything that they were guaranteed under federal law, helping them manage their resources, but also managing a series of things, of money called trust funds, money that is held by the federal government in trust. If you look at the deed for a reservation, it does not say property of the tribe. What it says is, property of the United States, held in trust for, insert tribe's name. It's the same title deed you will find for a national park, a national recreation area, that, that's what the Bureau manages, is that trust responsibility. Now, over time, the Bureau has changed, the Bureau has primarily been, throughout its history, staffed by non-native people. That changed in a series of cases called the BIA cases, in which the BIA had started to provide tribal preference. If you were a federally recognized Indian, you got a preference to be hired to the Bureau, and that was challenged on the basis of racial discrimination. And the Supreme Court in those cases came down and said, no, tribal status has nothing to do with race, it's political, it is a political status, just like being a United States citizen. Now, you would assume that because the Bureau is now more primarily staffed by native people, it would work more in, for the benefit of native people. That is true in some cases, but it is still responsible for carrying out the laws passed by the United States Congress, of which we have had very few native people ever elected to those seats. There's a great deal of joy and excitement about the appointment of Secretary Deb Holland as the first Native woman, and the first Native to head the Bureau, head the Department of the Interior, yet she is still bound by the laws passed by the United States Congress, which generally do not work in favor of native people. The Bureau has had a long history of mismanagement, there's approximately, I believe the number was around $37 billion in trust funds that it has not ever been able to account for. Those records were held in basements that were infected with the Hantavirus, areas in which pipes burst and destroyed, ledgers were altered, so the Bureau as a whole does not have a very strong and positive history. It is getting better, in that tribes now have the opportunity to opt for what is known as self-governance, in which they take all the roles and money from the Bureau and administer it themselves. They're subject to a federal trust audit, where they come in and make sure they're carrying out, that the tribe is carrying out the trust responsibility that the United States is supposed to. But the Bureau in and of itself is a void. Having worked for tribes for 15 years, you, there are a lot of ordinances that tribes pass that need to have approval by the Assistant Secretary of Indian Affairs. It is not uncommon for a tribe to send that in and wait years. I, I personally handled one which took four and a half years to get a secretarial approval on, because it sat on, it just sat, it wasn't a high priority. It, it, so the Bureau is a very difficult thing to work with, and one of the things that is raised is, you know, it's been five years since a tribe has been seeking federal acknowledgement. In the, in the world of federal acknowledgement, that's not a long time. There are tribes who've been waiting 20, 30 years for this, and are still waiting for that. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but that's the Bureau.
That's, that, I, I sensed that you were going to say some of the things you said, and, and I think, you know, I became a citizen in 2008 of this country, and I certainly appreciate all the privileges and, and everything that this country has given me and my family, but also with that, I recognize all the unfortunate things that this country has done, especially to the native peoples and African Americans and such, and so we certainly have a lot of institutions with the residue of this past sort of erasure, racism, and all these things that have happened. I continue to think, though, that, that this decision, I mean, obviously, we're not going to be, the item before is not to take action, it's an informational item, but I would say that I continue to think that this, for lack of a better word, this decision, I'm not sure it's going to have a tremendous amount of power in, in the tribe taking it forward, because in the end, as you mentioned, and I assume what you're saying... because in the end, as you mentioned, and I assume what you're saying is accurate, it really is still going to require someone, a member of Congress, whether it's someone from our delegation here or someone else in the United States to carry this forward and carry the water for the tribe. And without that, even if we do say, yes, we recognize you here in the city of San Jose, we give you that recognition, if you will, symbolically, that it may not fundamentally change anything, because the folks that they, you all need to convince are people that are at a higher pay grade than us, right? And so anyhow, I, I very much appreciate, and I don't know if you wanna say anything, I feel like you, you wanna turn on your mic and, please.
I'm a professor, this is what we do. I would say that if you were to do, to pass a resolution such as this, you're doing something a little more than being symbolic. There's a great deal of emphasis, particularly in higher ed and governments now, to read land acknowledgements or have land acknowledgements recited at the start of meetings. Those have become performative acts, in that we did it, we feel really good about it, and then we go about our business. So passing this would not simply be symbolic, it would be putting action behind those type of statements. But unfortunately, as you said, this is a political process in that, you know, I am not a politician, I will never pretend to be one. You are. You have to figure that out for yourselves. But if you want to take and move beyond the performative, it does mean that you have to then consider what those consequences of that are and how it will impact everybody. But for the city to recognize and acknowledge in writing, "In official action," the people who have called this place home and have taken care of it since time immemorial is more than symbolic, it's an actual action.
Yeah. Thank you for that. I appreciate that, that, that perspective and that correction. Okay, well, that unfortunately not is before, is not before us today, but thank you so much for being here. I found it super interesting and it inspires me to go take one of your classes, quite frankly. So, so, so thank you for all the information, and that's all I got. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilmember. Okay, we're gonna come back around to Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank the presenter for the last words that you said. I would a hundred percent agree, you know, with you. We shouldn't like devalue or depreciate something that on, you know, black and white on a piece of paper looks simple as a resolution, then may or may not make a difference, because really what we're doing is we're humanizing the tribe, we're recognizing them, we're telling them that we see them, you know? We're, we're joining them in their campaign for recognition. So I want, it's, it's not just, I don't want people to feel like, oh, we do a resolution and it won't get anything accomplished. Obviously, it means a lot to the tribe. They're here in these chambers. It means a lot to the community. And I just, that, that should be recognized by, by us. And I just, you know, as somebody who was in the Brown Act, as somebody who met with you, Angel, and Sulma multiple times about this, I communicated, you know, I know that you, you mentioned to Councilmember Torres that that wasn't the record. I'm correcting the record now. I've told you both that any presentation about the tribal recognition should include the politics, should include how it's divisive, should include how the, the system has been weaponized against the public, and just by saying that's just not the record, that just isn't true. We've had those conversations, Angel.
Councilmember, I, I have to, I have to respectfully disagree with that last statement. You and I have had this conversation, and the direction that we've implemented is the direction that came from ultimately your Brown Act, the Rules Committee, and that's what we've done here. If you want something different, you can ask for something different, but I do think that, I do think that facts and truth is important, and I stand behind this, and, and to me, this means a whole lot, because I, I understand this issue very personally, and so I have a personal opinion on this. That's not what I'm providing today, but I also think that the process that we followed has been true, and there's been no deception in it, and, and it is quite offensive to hear that there's this implication that we somehow did something different than what we've discussed. And so I think it's important to correct that record.
You, you've communicated, you know, that there was hesitation to do this from the beginning, from administration, Angel. So let's not pretend that that didn't exist. Thank you.
I don't see any other hands. Do we have a motion to accept the staff presentations?
Do you need action?
No action.
Do you need, there's no action, do we need?
We need to...
You don't need, you don't need to accept it. It wasn't agendized for acceptance, it was agendized to just bring it back.
Okay.
Yeah, receive the information.
So we can, I'm not seeing any other hands then, we can move on if we'd like. Okay, thank you all. We are moving on to the next item. That's the end of item 3.4. We are on, excuse me, we're in the middle of a city council meeting. You're not allowed to speak at this time. We're on item 6.1, which is the Stormwater Management Annual Report, 2023-2024. We have a staff presentation. We're gonna move on to the staff presentation on item 6.1, Stormwater Management Annual Report, and this is looking back at 23-24.
Yeah, good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Lori Mitchell, Acting ESD Director, and I'm very pleased today to be joined by Regine Nair. She's our Deputy Director over Stormwater for Environmental Services, Jennifer Sagan, who's our Deputy Director of Transportation, and Matthew Nguyen, who's our Deputy Director in Public Works, as well as Assistant Chief Williams from the Fire Department. This item is our Stormwater Management Annual Report, and it covers all of the activities that the city has done to comply with our stormwater permit for the fiscal year in '23 and '24. And as you can see by the staff here today, it's definitely a one-team effort. There's many departments involved in this and the compliance, as we'll walk you through. And so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Regine.
All right, oh, can I look quicker? Yeah, sorry. All right. Thank you, Lori. So just as, as Lori mentioned, this is just an overview of last fiscal year. This is something that we do annually as part of the permit requirements. So just a reminder to, and sorry, I didn't say, good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council and public, Regine Nair, Deputy Director, Environmental Services. So as you're all familiar with the Clean Water Act, you know, it's, it's a federal requirement, and essentially, the stormwater permit complies with these requirements and ensuring that no discharges of pollutants enter into our waterways. And just for your information, Coyote Creek and Guadalupe River are both waters of the U.S., so just for your information. This permit applies to all seventy-nine permities throughout the Bay Area, so we're not immune, just, just so you're also aware of that. Okay, and as you're aware, this permit has twenty-two provisions, as shown on this slide, as, and as Lori mentioned, this is a one-team effort where several departments are engaged and are leading a lot of this effort in helping cleaning our waterways. And just for, you know, due to the nature of this extensive permit, we're only gonna focus what's highlighted in red in this presentation. So the first item is Provision C-3, which focuses on new and redevelopment projects, which implements green infrastructure. And what these are, are they're engineered systems that treat runoff and improve water quality. For background, this particular provision was actually delayed one year because of the seventy-nine permities I mentioned, actually shared with the Water Board that we need more time to educate our development community about all these changes. And so it only was implemented as of last year. And then also, just part of the other additional accomplishments we had to do was to update our municipal codes and our policies, just to make sure that we're in compliance with this new requirement. Also, there was a provision in this particular permit that, or this section, that didn't cover anything about temporary or emergency housing. And so the city staff, in collaboration with the Housing Department and Public Works, were instrumental in really advocating that, you know, you know, based on the data that we knew, to eliminate green infrastructure, because anytime you do anything to the earth with a certain square footage, you're required to implement some type of treatment system. And what that would result is minimal housing opportunities. And so the Water Board heard our argument and supported it, which was really a huge step in Water Board demonstrating their support. In addition, they also recognized the need for affordable housing, permanent affordable housing. And so they did listen to a lot of the feedback about how the calculation process, which is pretty meticulous to begin with, and so they were able to create a sliding scale concept, so, which was huge. And a special thanks again to our city departments who've been involved in that. And then just, oh, sorry, going back, just the last piece, sorry, I meant to say the last item. Can I go back? Can you help me go back? I don't know why it's not going back. Oh, there it is. It went back. Okay. One more slide back, please. Thank you. And, and as a requirement, we are required to inspect these green infrastructure devices that are installed annually, and my team leads that effort. And so there was a hundred and forty-six, and, and they also do measure the condition of these existing infrastructure, and about thirty-seven percent are currently in good condition. That's something that we will work on to really educate owners, property owners, as to how to improve to make sure these systems are well-maintained. So I'm gonna pass it to Jennifer to cover the next steps.
Thank you, Regine. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and members of the public. Jennifer Sagan, Deputy Director, Department of Transportation. So looking forward for green storm, stormwater infrastructure, one of the key things that we're gonna be doing is tracking the number of required projects and assessing them, assessing sites for city projects. And we have a project currently under construction now at Riverview, and we'll be completing that one this fall. And then moving ahead, we'll be, we're already in the process of and will be continuing to evaluate future funding for stormwater and green stormwater infrastructure maintenance. I'm going to go ahead and thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right, so moving on to the next provision is C-10, which is focus, the focus is trash load reduction. And this is actually for the city is combined with C-17, which is about focusing on discharges with un, unchallenged population. So the main goal of this particular provision is to prohibit trash entering into the storm sewer and into the waterways. What we've accomplished last year, as you all know, we got an approved direct discharge plan, which was a huge win for the city. In addition, the city of San Jose has also implemented a new program, or my, my particular division was leading this effort, in private land drainage areas, which is required under the permit. We did an extensive amount of outreach, having virtual meetings, and then also sending out letters and actually meeting with the properties that are impacted by this particular program. There were a total of two-hundred-and-forty parcels assessed all last year, and of the two-hundred-and-four, uh, twenty-four-hundred, sorry, not two-hundred-and-forty, twenty-four-hundred, thirteen-hundred of these parcels were actually considered potential as part of this program. And so this is something that we'll continue to investigate, but I'll let it, pass it to Matthew to cover the next two items.
Good afternoon, Council, Councilmember, Mayor, and Public. I'm Matthew Nguyen, Deputy Director for Public Works. So on the capital side, we also deliver projects to support the C-3, C-10, as well as other requirements that we are facing. So in 2023, we awarded the last trash capture device Phase 7 project, where we're supposed to install a trash capture device at six locations in the city. So by the end of fiscal year 2024, we were able to install the device at three locations, namely, Alexian, San Antonio, and lastly, Quimby Road, where we installed a twin device in late May 2024. This project, we encountered some challenges due to the high groundwater table. So because of that, we have to work with the contractor as well as with the Water Board to get a permit so that we can pump the water into the adjacent stormwater system. On a parallel effort, we also fast-tracked on the design of a small trash capture device project, that we installed about over five-hundred small trash capture device in existing outlet and catch basin. So these devices will be in place to, to capture the trash before it gets to the water So we bid the project, we sent the project out to bid in May, and unfortunately, we received only one bid. The price is very high, so we turned around and rejected the bid with the goal to go back, modify the project spec, and then send it back to, to bid again. So next slide. So going forward, we currently, yeah, so we currently have the small trash capture project posting right now, and we expect to get the bid by this Thursday. And if everything is going well, then we will be able to start the construction in late October, early November, and we should be able to complete the project by June next year. As for the LTC Phase 7 project, we are working with the contractor right now, trying to figure out the best course of action that we can take to continue with that project, how to deal with the high groundwater table, and we're striving to get the project complete by summer next year as well.
All right. Thank you, Matthew. And so just continuing on, what's our actions for this fiscal year? We are gonna be, we have investigated out of the thirteen-hundred properties, about two-hundred-and-nineteen, so about seventeen percent of these properties are actually really part of this particular program of the private drain, private lands drainage area, that there's certain classifications of how much trash that needs to be present. So, which is good news, that we are, you know, fairly a clean city in that perspective with our private properties. But just as a reminder to, you know, Council, that, you know, our team is gonna work very closely with every one of these property owners to ensure that they meet compliance. We really do want, you know, to, you know, and, and we have been getting good responses and engagement with the community with the letters that we've issued. So they're, they're wanting to make a difference. And so, but just as a reminder, we will, if no one, if individuals don't wanna comply, we will have to do any kind of enforcement action as required under the permit. So the next item is that we now have to implement the direct discharge plan, which I'll cover in the next slide, just what, what have been, we've been doing to date. Again, as a final reminder, you know, to Council, you know, our goal is to achieve a hundred percent compliance by December 31st, 2025. And we did get a six-month extension because we were one of the first cities to receive a direct discharge plan, or, or get an approved plan back in 2016. So because of that, we resubmitted a plan, as you all know, back in January of 2023, and got an approved plan. So it's written in the permit that we get a six-month extension. So where we are with the direct discharge program, as you're aware, City Manager's Office has been leading this effort in launching a one-team approach to focus on the enhanced neighborhoods and waterways, so that's been going full, full stream right now. Another aspect with regards to the waterway count and survey, this was a requirement in the direct discharge plan to establish a baseline of the number of individual in the Direct Discharge Plan, to establish a baseline of the number of individuals living in our waterways. And so, currently, a contract has been signed with Simtech, which is the same consulting firm that the county uses for their point-in-time count. Also, Environmental Services Department has started conversations with Valley Water to, you know, figure out how, what's the best approach to address trash that's in the channel of the waterway. And so, we'll be, you know, we'll come back to council and share more information as to where we go with that. And then, last but not least, at the end of this year, is something that we, you know, proposed to the Water Board, and they accepted, to give an update as to our progress, and we'll be meeting with them in December, so, and then every six months afterwards. So, the next provision in, that we wanted to highlight, is the polychlorinated, C-12 polychlorinated bifanols, which, as you are all aware, it's a carcinogenic legacy pollutant found in sediment that affects bay fish. What we have accomplished to date, there are actually two subprograms within this provision. The first one is the old industrial area, and this is managed actually through a countywide program. Many of you might be familiar with SCVERP, if you want me to say the acronym, I sure will. But they are in charge of really working with all the different agencies within our Santa Clara Valley to implement this program. So, we have identified six source properties. These are considered higher levels of PCBs that are on the property, and part of the requirement is that we could refer them to the Water Board. We did work very closely with Office of Economic Development on this, so they're fully aware of this issue, and so, we'll continue to do that. The other aspect of this particular program is what they call moderate properties. These are medium-level of PCBs. They're not necessarily on the property, but they're in the public right-of-way, and they're found within our storm sewer systems. And so, this is something that, you know, we've identified and will continue to inspect. The second program under this particular provision is the building demolition permit process. These are buildings that have been built in the 1950s to the 1980s, and any of those could be potential with PCBs. The main thing about this is that we have to make sure that whenever these buildings are demolished, that the storm sewer system is maintained, and then also that they're properly disposed, any of the building material. So, that's, and so, to date, we found two buildings that comply with this requirement. So, where we are with the next steps, this is another set of plans that we did submit, and it was rejected, and we have, we're going through the second iteration, but fingers crossed, everything's going to be okay with this one. We did identify another two properties that are higher levels of PCBs, and so, we're working through that process to get Water Board approval to refer. And then, also, just the partnership that we have with SCVERP and the city to continue investigation, I know, it's a good acronym, to continue to identify and monitor and investigate so that we can address PCBs. And then, the last but not least, you know, thanks to council, you know, we did get approval for funding on this enhanced O&amp;M, so DOT will be leading that effort once we define what's the, you know, the actual locations of these moderate sites. And so, we'll, we'll be cleaning the public right-of-way in there. So, I'll pass it to Chief Williams to cover the next slide.
Good afternoon, Mayor Mahan, members of the City Council and the public, James Williams, Assistant Fire Chief. So, the Fire Department's role in this particular effort really is focused on our priorities of life safety, property conservation, and environmental protections. As a result of that, when this was brought to our attention, we immediately started to work on updating policies to address that. And we did that effective March 14th with dechlorinization kits. So, when we have large-scale fires, runoffs, even fires involving vehicle fires, rubbish, those types of things, in many cases, when they meet the criteria, we are dechlorinating the water, the operation, to provide some level of environmental protections. We continue to work closely with ESD. In fact, they'll be invited to a training that we have coming up, I believe, in the next month or so, where we're able to share ideas and to identify best management practices going forward, to ensure that we meet the requirements where possible. And when we look at next steps, one of the things that we've done is gotten rid of our AFFA aqueous film-forming foam, which at one point had fluorine. We now have foam that is fluorine-free, which again, is better for the environment, but again, we deal with that through the dechlorinization process. We will be submitting to the Regional Firefighting Working Group Discharge Report by September 30th of 2025. We continue again to work closely with regional partners in the firefighter runoff working group to establish a response for that. And then, certainly, working with ESD, we evaluate adequacy of practices for large industrial sites. An example might be the Chevron Distribution Center for all of the various gas stations, where there's large quantities of petroleum, fall under regulations such as CALARP or the SPCC program. And these are all preventative measures to ensure that we are able to hopefully reduce the opportunity for spills and runoff. And so, that's on the prevention side of things, when we look at our Fire Prevention Bureau, our hazmat folks, again, working closely with ESD, in order to try to prevent these events from happening. And so, collectively, as one team, we have been able to start the process again by developing a new policy, implementing it, dechlorinizing water, and again, working with partners to continue to establish best management practices for the effective protection of the environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. So, just a reminder, this photo is really what the stormwater permit is trying to achieve. You know, this is to preserve and protect our waterways. It is a gem in our, you know, in our city, and it really should be enjoyed by all. So, this concludes my presentation, and I thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone who contributed to the staff report, and like how you closed it with that beautiful image. I know that's a goal we all share, and frankly, we're still ways away from it. We've got a lot of work ahead. Okay, do we, Tony, do we have a public comment on this item?
Not on this item.
Okay. Thank you. Come back to my colleagues here, and we'll start with Councilor Torres.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much for your presentation. So, I noticed that when the, within the report, there was roughly only one mention, page 209, of abating encampments along the waterways with the previously stated 500-feet buffer zone. I was wondering if there was a circumstance or situation where individuals currently living along the waterways were able to remain in the 500-feet buffer zone, where we had previously been told it would be a no-encampment zone?
Councilmember Torres, this is Kip Harkness, Deputy City Manager. The 500-foot was always intended in the discharge plan, it's where we would need to monitor and evaluate. We have yet to come forward to this body with policy recommendations on what the no-encampment zone will be going forward. So, at this point, we're conducting a couple of actions related to your question, and I may not be directly answering it, so if I, if you need to re-ask it, or I need to change my, provide additional information, please let me know. We're doing a waterways count in the very near future, before the end of this fiscal year, to have a clearer understanding of who is within that 500-foot zone and who isn't. And then, as part of that, we will also be identifying what are the priority stretches, which we will be both clearing and then holding clear, and come back to you with any needed legislation or policy decisions around the formulation of a no-encampment zone within that area. But at this point, the 500-foot is intended to be, where should we be paying the most attention? Because those discharges are likely to have a greater impact on the waterways, not a strict prohibition from the board, or even from us yet, in terms of that being a no-encampment zone.
Okay. Thank you, Kip, for that. Could you, could you give us an example of what would be an acceptable encampment along the, along the waterway?
By acceptable encampment, you mean the one that would not be a correct category for abatement?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know if BSJ is in the audience. Yes, Olympia is. She can probably give a better description than I can of some of the ways that they keep encampments that are within this area, and in fact, across the city, within certain guidelines that they have. And so, if Olympia would share, that would be helpful. I will say, just for a little bit of time management, there is a comprehensive annual report on homelessness that's coming to this body on November 5th, which is intended to bring the entire team together to talk about where we are going and what we're going to be doing. The focus of this report was intended to be what we did last year related to the Direct Discharge Program. So, I know this is a very, kind of a little bit of an overlap, but we're more prepared to speak to what happened in the last fiscal year on the Direct Discharge Program than give you a comprehensive overview of what's going forward. With that, if you could give us a brief, Olympia, that'd be great.
Hello, Olympia Williams, Parks and Recreation, interim Deputy Director. So, in terms of encampments along the creek area, we really focus on trying to reduce people's footprint to a 12-by-12. We ask people to maintain their area, to bag their trash, and we also collect any bio-waste that we have to prevent those discharges from going into the creek at this time.
Okay. So, I know we're not there yet, and I'm probably jumping the gun, but when, when we do create these 500-feet zones, right, because we voted on this in June, 25 million, right? Everyone is going to be abated regardless, right?
So, we have not decided that the 500-foot is the zone that we would require for the no-encampment. What we'll be doing over the next several months is evaluating which reaches we're going to prioritize, and whether that, in some cases, that might be a 500 feet from the bank, in some cases, it might be 50 feet. What is the appropriate zone that we want to clear in a respectful way, ideally providing alternative locations for those people who are unfortunate to have to live in our creeks, and then hold clear through a combination of physical barriers, signage, and repeated reinspection and clearance of the area, so that we permanently deal with the trash issue there? We can bring that information back, and we'll be bringing that information back to the council as a whole, but we haven't, we do not believe that the 500 is a uniform standard. We want to take it, look, reach by reach, at what makes sense, both for the rivers and for the communities around them, as well as the people living there, and allows us to get ahead of this problem and keep, keep those areas clear.
Okay. So, up to, up to 500 feet?
Yeah, and it could, in some instances, be beyond, but I would say up to 500 feet is probably a good way to think about it. Think of 500 feet as the, sort of the lens where we're paying the most attention in terms of the waterways, and the areas is most likely to have a severe impact. So, if it has an impact on the waterways, and we need to keep it clear, we will, we will include that in the no-reencampment area.
Okay. So, all right. So far, I like what I'm hearing, but I have other questions, and I can, I can ask offline since we're still moving along with this, with the policy that we just passed in June. So, but again, thank you so much for, for your, for your presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilman Dwan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, for the report. Rajni, I just want to, you had 615 projects, and you only completed 146, I believe.
For the inspections?
Yes.
So, the minimum requirement to inspect all these devices are actually, it's 20% per the permit requirement, and these are locations that could have multiple devices in a area, so it's...
Could you describe what that device is?
The device is a green infrastructure. It's an engineered system that has vegetation, a certain soil that treats the water, you know, from a property. So, it's not, to inspect all 600 every year, that would require a lot more staff to do, but the permit is very specific. 20% of the inventory for every permity is the minimum that needs to be inspected. And we do a five-year cycle, so every one of these devices will be inspected within that five-year permit. So, it's not that we just see it this year, and we don't go back. And we are going to increase our outreach to educate property owners that they have these devices. A lot of times, they think it's just regular landscaping, and it's not, these are regulated by, you know, under the permit.
Thank you, and I know that even with the Fire Department, or when we have a new station with these bio-retention area, you guys do inspect that as well. I do have a question for Jennifer. On, on private land, what would be considered that these partial to be underneath the implosion plan? What is the requirement? Is it there 1,000 square feet, 10,000 square feet lot, or so on?
Councilmember, I'll take that. So, the private land drainage area? It's actually just the property regardless of area. It's really if they're plumbed into the storm sewer system, that they have a private lateral that's connected, and there's trash. So, and there's a whole process as to how we designate what trash is. So, so it's medium, high, very high. And of that 1,300 that we designated are under the program, 219 met the criteria. But we still need to investigate if those property owners are physically connected. The only information we have is really just the connection fees that they pay, so we want to confirm, because these properties, for perpetuity, are going to be required to comply to this program. So, we want to make sure everything is fair and, you know, and accurate.
And out of curiosity, how do you contain, like mercury, or the PCB, if you will, the poly, I believe it's chlorinated, bifanol?
So, so the way that chemical, it actually adheres to sediment, and so, the way, and Jennifer, you may want to expand a little bit more, but, you know, the way that we would have to do is clean inlets, clean pipes, do street sweeping, this kind of activity, to ensure that sediment is captured, and disposed properly too. So, you can't just go to a regular landfill.
Absolutely. Thank you. And what is the, the actual, for Matthew, I believe, is the actual cost to have that large garbage collection area when you get all the storm drains and so on?
For the estimated capital cost for a large trash capture device?
Yeah, it's called the Lost Trash Capture Device, and these are very large device, usually as about 16 to 20 feet in diameter, and some of them, we need to go down to 40 feet below ground. So, that's the bottom of the device. And then, when all of the water coming in from the drainage area, it will be collected in that one device, and then through the, all of the circulation of the water and the filter system, we will be able to stop and collect all of the debris that is 5 millimeter or larger. So, everything will be captured there, and then O&amp;M will come in and remove that trash.
And what is the cost for a typical one of those devices? I believe that's part of the question.
The cost is roughly, right now, we have about six device in a project, and it costs about 10 million, so it's about $1.5 to $2 million per device.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and as I suggested, yeah, and thank you for keeping our environment clean for the future generation. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Vice Mayor?
Thank you so much, and thank you for all your work. As you know, stormwater is one of my things, and I'm interested in the trash load reduction. And, you know, as we look at, I mean, I'm doing very, very tiny scale, you know, just working with my adopted storm drain, but eventually, eventually, we would like, you know, I'm working to see it that it tries to go citywide. And it seems to me that, you know, on some of these areas where, you know, I know you have private lands enforcement, I, I would like more information in terms of, you know, if there's a way to sort of bring them in to adopt that area, so that, you know, there's a sense of pride and responsibility and all that kind of stuff, so that we can begin to sort of get more interest in, in actually being more proactive, as opposed to, oh, this is being... more proactive as opposed to, oh, this is being imposed on me. And, and I think that it takes a little time. So as we're trying to, you know, I mean, it's a pilot for my District One right now, but you know, as we start thinking about other opportunities, to me, it makes a lot of sense to say, hey, this is really a good thing. We don't want trash going to the waterways. So I think that there's a, a positive way to be able to collaborate. So I'd love to maybe follow up and, and see what are some of the things that we can do to start thinking about it because it takes a few years. And I think that the more that we're able to make it a positive thing and an educational thing, it, it kind of brings people along a little bit better. So I'd love to be able to be a part of that. And, you know, I think that it just takes these little bits here and there. I looked at that storm drain on your slide number six and I thought, oh my gosh, you just get a broom and sweep that stuff up. You know, those weeds have been there probably for years. So I think, you know, little things add up and, and I'd love to be a part of this and find a way of how the adopt a storm drain program can also contribute to something positive in other districts. Thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Councilor Jimenez?
Yes, thank you. And for, for those council members that don't know, you can actually go out to some of the locations and take a tour of the trash. Anyway, I did it. It was super fascinating. Thank you for that. I do have a question about one that seems to be still being worked on, the one on Blossom Hill Road by 85. I, I thought that was, we're getting closer to that, but it's still causing traffic jams and a host of other things. What's the status?
Yes, we do encounter some major delay on that project. When we first start on that location, we found out that the water table is really high compared to what we have on the design. So we move on, trying to wait for the summer to come and then see if the water table will go down. Unfortunately, it's still very high. So right now, we are working with our contractor, trying to figure out what is the next best step. It could be to come back and try to de-water and continue with the project, but it could also be backfill and move that site to the next project.
All right.
And we're going to have the decision made within the next month or so.
Okay. Because it's been there so long that it's just become, it's become a fixture. It's just what everyone is-
We, yeah.
Part of the environment.
Apologize for that delay.
No, it's okay. I just, I pass by there often, so I was just curious to, okay. All right. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you for all the work. This is important stuff. Thanks. And I'll, and I'll move approval.
Second.
Great. So motion to accept the staff report, I assume?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to accept the staff report.
Great. Thank you. Councilor Batra?
I want to follow up on the Blossom Hill item because I've been going through that area quite a bit. And many times people have asked the question, they don't know what it is. There's no sign which tells you, is it a sewer being built or is it a construction? Is that your normal? There's no sign which can tell the people what it is and what may be the expected date because that's the other second question which people have asked, that when this thing might begin to have a normal flow of traffic?
Yeah. So it's noted, we'll inform our team to go back out there, take a look at the site and improve it as well as adding more information as needed. But like I said, we're going to have a final decision within the next month or so. And then we'll see some activities out there.
So if you get the queries anymore, we're saying a month from now, we may continue with the project or we may just fill the trash or put the dirt back and move on somewhere else. And if you do carry on, which means you found the conditions to be satisfactory for moving on, how long would that take after assuming that it's the right kind of decision to move forward?
Yeah, it really depends on what we're gonna see when we go back to that location. If the groundwater table is still high, it definitely will take a lot more time to get it down to the level where we can start the base, base rock at the bottom. So if everything go well, it will take about three months for the construction at that location after we made the final decision.
All right, all right. Okay. That's very useful information that we can, you know, at least share with our community members whose traffic flow has been affected for quite a long time. Thank you very much for taking care of the environment, especially the water, the storm system and protecting us from any penalties. So thank you for taking care of that. Bye-bye.
Thanks, council member. You know, I'll just, I don't see any other hands. I'll just close by saying I really appreciate the work you all are doing and the cross-departmental collaboration. You know, I'm out, as are all of my colleagues, frequently doing volunteer projects out in the community and have the opportunity to often be down in the waterways doing cleanups. And when you're at that point of being down in the channel fishing plastics and metals out, it's, it's way too late. Damage has been done. It's really a depressing sight to see. And of course, the truth is, we don't get all of it. And it's, it's, you know, just part of why that's a very kind of concrete thing I see basically weekly and certainly has me inspired to, to do more, for us collectively to do more. I know my colleagues all feel the same way. Obviously, this was a look at last year and I, we read through and appreciate the update. Soon, as was mentioned, I think by Kip, we'll look at the homelessness report and really look forward at what we're doing to, excuse the pun, get upstream of, further upstream of this crisis that we see. And the storm capture devices and some of the things we discussed are a big part of that. But we also know that, as has been referenced, over 80%, maybe closer to 90% of what's in the waterways is coming from the fact that we have thousands of people without homes living outside, many of them along our waterways. And so this is going to be, I know, my colleagues know this, but I'll just kind of repeat for everybody, this is probably the single biggest and most significant undertaking we will embark on as, as a team, as a city over the coming years, figuring out how to help thousands of people get into a safe, managed environment with proper sanitation and significantly reduce what is ending up in the waterways. And it's a, it's a big challenge. I know we're up to it. As I think Councilor Torres referenced, we've allocated $27 million to that end in this year's budget, but I think we all know that's a first step. It's a down payment. We're going to learn a lot this year. We'll be talking much more about it in a few weeks when we get our homelessness report. But just wanted to highlight that's, that's kind of where we're going. I'm confident we're going to meet our obligations under the stormwater permit and clean up our waterways and our bay. And it's important work that we're doing. So thank you all for, for the report. We appreciate it. Our city attorney would like to chime in, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure that the vote is not simply to accept the staff recommendation, but that it's clear that the council is adopting a resolution that will then go to the board along with the report and everything. So that is the recommendation, but I want to make sure that it's clear that you're adopting a resolution. So thank you.
Okay. My apologies. And I may, I may have confused things. So just let me just make sure the maker of the motion is, understands that to be the case. And it's good with it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. And Vice Mayor? Great. Thank you. Okay. Nora, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Davis absent.
Thank you all again. Okay, we're on to our final agendized item, which is item 8.1, Rent Stabilization Strategic Plan Status Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Eric Solivan, Housing Director, and I'm joined by my colleague, Emily Hissop, who's a Division Manager over the Rent Stabilization Program. Today, we come forth with a brief presentation here regarding our strategic plan for the rent stabilization program. We'll go through a few slides here and I'll provide some quick context. I'll provide some quick context on the history of this plan. So the strategic plan began and was initially called for back in 2017. As the city auditor had reviewed the program as it was growing and going into effect, it took a little while for this plan to come forth. But now that it has come forth, it is capturing a broad set of all the various programs that fall under our rent stabilization program, including our apartment rent ordinance, mobile home rent ordinance, Ellis Act, housing payments, et cetera. So within that, what this plan brings forth is how we're going to strategically look at outcomes with the delivering of this program that fall within three categories. One is, where do we look at the unit preservation? Two is, how do we stabilize families? And then three, how do we look at ways in which we can improve our communications, both internally amongst our departments as well as externally with both our landlords and tenants? And so that is kind of the goal of this strategic plan in its summary form. And I'm going to ask Emily just to go through some quick slides about the history for the development of this initiative.
Thank you. Emily Hissop, Division Manager of the Rent Stabilization Division. So this process in earnest started at the beginning of 2023, where the first part of developing the strategic plan was looking at how the ordinances had been doing over the years, what improvements there could be, get, most importantly, feedback from stakeholders. So a series of meetings were held in early 2023 with housing providers, tenants, mobile home park owners, mobile home park residents to really gather data on how are these, these programs doing? Are they getting their intended effects? And work was done over the summer that 2023 to develop a first draft. Various drafts were shared with these different stakeholder groups, continuously proved it was improved. It was an iterative process culminating into the spring where Eric Solivan, their new Housing Director, also had an opportunity to weigh in before taking this, what we hope would be final draft plan to the Community Economic Development Committee and here. So the changes that we've had since April 2024 is we really simplified and updated the, the central goals of the strategic plan. The plan aims on improving the rent stabilization program, on a focus on these three primary goals of family housing stabilization, unit preservation, and outreach and engagement. Each of these is goals. There's strategies to implement programs and other staff evaluation tools to increase the stability of families and fairness in the rental market, to promote and enable unit preservation, and finally, the most important, to help foster positive relationships between tenants and housing providers and also further fair housing through really inclusive and targeted education and outreach to both tenants and housing providers. Each of these goals areas has short-term and long-term strategies outlined in the document. Short-term strategies are ones already in progress or will begin this fiscal year. Long-term strategies are tasks that will begin sometime in the three-year timeframe but won't necessarily be completed at the end of this three-year period. So that concludes our presentation on the Rent Stabilization Strategic Plan, and we're available for questions.
Great. Thank you for the presentation. Tony, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, Anil Babar.
Good afternoon, Council, and thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Anil Babar with the California Apartment Association. I want to, first of all, thank the CED Committee back in April for agreeing to defer the approval of this report till today. I, I believe it really benefited from having Eric's ability to have his perspective on it. The current plan does address a lot of our concerns that we had in the initial report. We do have some outstanding concerns, primarily around the expansion of the registry and how it purports to add more data that we think will present both operational and maybe some legal challenges. We have to delve into that. But we, we look forward to working with the Housing Department on addressing some of those concerns as they come forward. Overall, we want to express our appreciation where this plan is headed and we encourage, we, we look to encourage more conversation with the Housing Department. Thank you.
Back to Council.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we'll start with Councilor Duane.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff, for, for the report. On the Ellis Act ordinance, does this program slowly, I mean solely for apartments?
So the Ellis Act refers to a state law. And it's when units in multifamily buildings are withdrawn from the rental market, no longer going to be renters.
Okay. And does this program solely apply for rent control areas?
So rent stabilized apartments, those built before 1979, are subject to more requirements of the Ellis Act. If they're built after 1979, there, there is not the increased relocation assistance payment, but there are still measures to, to follow.
And what have the positive impact been from this program?
From Ellis Act?
Yes.
And so it has not been around for a very long time. And I believe one of only one or two projects has actually come to fruition since the implementation of the program. And really what we've seen more anecdotally is there's places where the, the owner wants to redevelop or is partnering with a developer and there's tenants who've been there for 30 years. They may be elderly veterans and the relocation consultant really works with them in trying to identify other housing. So this is giving people the support they need. It's not just the payment, but really making sure they land in, in another unit. The Ellis Act gives that amount of time. And there's, you know, time to, to do the permitting and everything else that's happening while the tenant is being worked with.
And is there a grant program that helps tenants to, to move from, you know, one particular location to another with some type of rent subsidy or control?
So the, for rent stabilized units that are being taken off the rental market, one component of Ellis Act requirements is a relocation assistance payment, which is, it's three months and it's, the, the monthly rent amount is periodically adjusted through the city manager's office. And if the, if there's a household member who's elderly, disabled, or has children, there's an extra payment. We'd say in the neighborhood of like $10,000 to $13,000 total. So that doesn't subsidize going forward, but really the relocation assistance consultant is working to find affordable housing, appropriate housing that the, the tenants can move into for the long term.
Especially with the, the tight rental market, it's, it's going to be a very tough situation for a lot of our elderly or, or family who are, you know, moving from, from one geographical area to another, even with the, the relocation assistance. But for the long term, they could be forced out of the area in the short term because of the rent increase and so on.
I will note, and I didn't note before, if there are rental units being returned back into the structure, the tenants get the first right of return at the same rental amount.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your answer.
Thanks, council member. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, and thank you for all your work on this. I just had a couple of questions on the family housing stabilization. What sort of specific data are we looking for in the short-term strategy 1.4? That's the data collection.
So primary language, AMI, what income level are the- So primary language, AMI, what income level? Are they extremely low-income, low-income, ethnicity, and race, and family size, and if there's minor children, elderly, or disabled household members?
And then what is your thought on how we're going to be able to use this data collected to refine our policies?
This is specifically for our petition process, where tenants are addressing issues they may have in the unit. And we have a goal of reaching those who may not have the resources, or language, or, you know, wherewithal to try to address these issues through other manners. So we want to make sure we're targeting, that we're reaching the people who need the most assistance in getting maintenance and repairs done and things like that. So if we get one particular demographic only, we're not serving all of the population where there might be the highest need.
Oh, great. Thank you. And then what sort of timeline are we looking for Strategy 1.6?
Because, like I said, the Ellis Act projects are few and far between, particularly at the moment, and they span years. This is part of our development of procedures for Ellis Act, and making sure we, you know, can reach a tenant later on and see what the impacts were of the project.
Great. Thank you.
And Vice Mayor, I will also add, for item 1.4, we also collect this data in order to meet some of our social and racial equity impact goals, so that we can see that we're serving a broad set of communities that are also impacted.
Great. Thank you so much for that. With that, I'd like to move acceptance of the status report.
The conversation about relocation just sparked a question for me. I've been interested to hear some high-level reflections, and then we can pick it up on a future item. Seems to me there is a tension in here between unit preservation, one of our goals, and the need to also have a lot more housing supply. And maybe, I don't know to what extent we're running into that tension, but I'm just curious how we think about protecting vulnerable residents who we don't want to be displaced, but also making it easier for us to do something that frankly, as a state, we've really done a poor job of in recent years, decades now, which is building sufficient supply relative to population and job growth. And I'm just curious how, Eric, you and your team are starting to think about that tension?
Yeah.
Just a small question to end.
Sure. So, Mayor, that's a good point and a good question. You know, as we think about the tensions between preservation, as well as needing to increase density to get to abundant housing stock, this is part of the tension. And how do we ensure that residents are not negatively impacted by that? So through the relocation assistance, through other supportive programs, as well as the right to return to future rebuilds, that provides good opportunity to ensure there's continued family stabilization within these communities, what otherwise not negatively impacting future density and development. You know, part of our goals around getting to abundant housing stock, as well as mixed income communities, will ensure we provide substantial units in the future moving forward.
That sounds philosophically like where we want to be. Just one quick follow-up, and then I'll let us take this vote. We presume, I'm curious how we can measure the effects on either side of that. I imagine we have a decent ability to measure displacement, though probably not perfect. I'm curious to what extent we can measure the opportunity cost of the units we don't get built because of restrictions on adding that density because of our desire to preserve, and how we actually measure those impacts.
That's a good question. That's data we need to collect moving forward to better assess what is the impacts of the regulatory scheme within California that limits production, and how do we create that more balancing act?
Right. Because it's kind of like two goals, right? We want to protect people today, and that's a worthy goal that we should pursue. We also want a lot more units. In the long run, we're all in trouble. We're kind of, we can shoot ourselves in the foot if we lock down the production market. Okay, great. I know that's a longer conversation we'll have. Appreciate the staff report. We've got a motion and a second. Tony, let's vote. Great. Thank you. Thanks again to staff. We wanted to open forum. Now, this is an opportunity for members of the community to comment on city business that was not on today's agenda. The council doesn't respond, but we get an opportunity to hear from folks about whatever's on their minds. Tony?
Okay, I have, I think it's 11 cards. So I'm going to read off the names. You don't have to come up in the order you're called. Just if you hear your name, run to the microphone if you want to be first. Otherwise, just queue up. I have Patricia, I'm not sure if it's Jamie or Jaime. So that's Patricia, Julie Haas, Rebecca Davis Matthews, Lakshmi Iyer to start. I'm going to keep calling names in case some people left. I have Annie, Krishna, Diane Foxen, Jose Roman, Elena Gaffney. Go ahead.
Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor. I'm Lakshmi. I'm a resident of San Jose for more than 10 years now. And I'd like to bring attention of all of you elected officials to the plight of our shelter animals. Recently, I came to know through social media about a dog on the euthanasia list, and that is how I got to know about the dire situation that many of our shelter animals are in. If we could have better awareness and outreach between the city and the members of the general public, then more people would know about these animals that need fostering, that need adoption. We need more education and awareness. And also, I hear about these big dogs like German Shepherds, pit bulls, all being confined in narrow kennels for hours and hours without exercise, sunlight, fresh air. They develop behavioral issues, and they are put on the euthanasia list. This should not be the case. We should have them get fresh air, get more open spaces, certified animal behaviorists. Silicon Valley is the hotbed of innovation, and San Jose is the capital of Silicon Valley. We have the brightest minds in the nation and probably the world. And if we can get new phones and computers and innovate our way out of technology problems, we should be able to find a solution to this animal shelter crisis. So please do the needful to improve situation at our shelters. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'm also going to call the last two cards, Anne DeShenez and Tony Matthews.
Do I have to press the button? So my name is Krishna, and I volunteer at, or I volunteered at both shelters, San Jose and San Martin. I help rescues in Southern California and the local area as well. Currently, because of my schedule, I've pulled back, and I help on social media, and often it is at-risk dogs. As you'll hear later on from the other commenters, the plight of cats as well and other animals is very concerning. Shelter, the name itself states, it should be a safe haven for these animals that are found as strays. And often, they are used as breeder dogs, or, you know, quick cash cows for people who, you know, are incentivized by the greed. And instead of it being a safe haven, the concerning issue is the comfort and care of these animals. Euthanasia is not the solution to this overpopulation crisis that we face. And often, the shelters resort to that. The community has stepped up in numerous ways, through rescue organizations, through advocates and volunteers, and the shelters kind of push them aside. Any feedback is considered detrimental to management at any shelter. And what happens is they clamp down. And when they clamp down, people start walking on eggshells. In order to take care of the dogs and cats, they stop giving feedback. They stop feeling heard. And that is the current situation. I think there are stakeholders that have gone and spoken to the City Manager, the Deputy Manager of San Jose, and nothing gets done. They get the runaround, the can is kicked down the.
That's your time. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Diane Foxen. I'm actually a resident of Sunnyvale. I want to give you a comparison of if I trap a cat in Sunnyvale, or kittens, I can take them into their designated shelter, Humane Society's Silicon Valley, that day or the next morning. And once it reaches a shelter, they will be looked at by a certified behaviorist, and that animal will be fast-tracked either to the spay-neuter adoption site or floor, or they'll be fast-tracked to become the community cat program, where they get spay-neutered, vaccinated, microchipped, and returned back to their community colony. I don't have to have an appointment for this. Prior to 2020, I was a very active trapper in every single district here in the city of San Jose on my two days that I have off. And I would bring in a minimum of two to four cats per week for altering, and then returned to the community cat. By doing this, per year, just two cats, it saves 2,000 unwanted kitten births in your communities. We have a very active trapper community in the city of San Jose. We have rescues trapping in San Jose, doing the jobs that your shelter should be doing for your San Jose residents. And sadly, I keep thinking, we're going to get this TNR program back up and going at San Jose, and it's not. There's very few appointments that are available, if you can even get them. Millions of dollars are going into San Jose, but we're not addressing what's happening in the field. If we don't stop the births in the field, you will not stop the influx of animals in your shelter. If your city residents who are also reaching out to Bay Area cats and to the trappers, hey, I have these cats in my community having babies. What can I do? Can I borrow a trap? Show me what to do. Sure, I can show you what to do. I-
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Elena Gaffney. I'm from a nonprofit, registered nonprofit animal rescue in San Jose, animal furifrance rescue. We help animals on euthanasia lists in San Jose shelter, shelters in Silicon Valley and beyond. Basically, I wanted to share today a lot of concerns that's been really bothering a lot of people. Too many of us left. We had a rally today, more than 60 people, and a lot wanted to talk and discuss with you, share their perspectives. So I only have limited time. This is what I would like to say. We are in crisis, animal overpopulation crisis. Shelters are full, animal rescues are full. Our communities are also full beyond the capacity. We've tried to get in touch with Mayor, with city management. Typically, the responses we get, thank you, we share your concern, goodbye. And this has been happening for two years. So right now, the community concerns are reaching a very critical point. So what we've done, we've created a grassroots advocacy platform, and within the last seven days, city council and the mayor were sent 3,000 emails by our community members. I'm not sure if you got to read those emails. Thank you to Omar Torres. I've got response from you. So our community is struggling, and today, we would like to ask, dear Mayor and City Council, we respectfully submit a proposal for the creation of dedicated-
Thank you. That's your time. Next speaker.
For each of them.
I've called all the names.
Okay, great.
So since nobody's making their way up, I'm going to assume that's back to council.
Okay. Thank you. And I really appreciate you all sitting through the whole meeting. I have also met with various groups in recent months. We have probably two or three items coming to council between now and the end of the calendar year on this issue. So we will keep you all informed on when this item is coming to council in different forums so that we can talk more about it. But appreciate the information, the contact info. Okay, that exhausts open forum. We are now adjourned. Thank you, colleagues.